Everyone. Let's start on the second part of budget study section. Last week, we finished, oh, actually no, two weeks ago. We finished in the first part for the general budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to the two thousand twenty-three. We still have many questions and it each individual questions. We already in the contact with the city manager and each department. We are working on that. Hopefully, we can get and more and information. We can either understand or we can and solve the, you know, our questions, yeah. So today I would like to pass to Sue. Let's continue for capital improvement project.
Great. Uh, so, uh, good afternoon, Mayor Ding and council members. So as, um, Mayor Ding just said, we'll be presenting the CIP, Water Cemetery and Other Funds Fiscal Year, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budgets. Then, um, in addition, I'm going to provide a, an, an update on a couple of changes that we made to the general fund budget since the study session on May fourth. Um, we're also going to discuss some, the staffing changes for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And then we'll give a quick overview of transfers between funds and general fund reserves. So I'm going to start with the, um, changes to the general fund since our last meeting. Um, there were just a few changes. Uh, we re-reviewed the franchise tax revenue and, um, and realized we had probably underestimated it. And so we increased it by a hundred and twelve, twelve thousand. So that increased our general fund revenues by the same dollar amount, a hundred and twelve thousand. And then there were a few changes to general fund expense. Uh, we just received updated health benefit information, so the medical benefits have increased slightly. Um, one of the staffing changes I'll be discussing, um, next, uh, did increase salaries and benefits by approximately seventy thousand. And I'm sorry, there's nothing in your budget book right here today that has anything that, that shows this, right? We don't have that revenue. Okay. Um, so I'm just, is this kind of an overview, overview of what the changes were? Okay.
Yeah, that is all right.
Okay, okay. Um. So anyway, so one of the staffing changes I'm discussing next did increase salary benefits by approximately seventy thousand. And then lastly, as the CIP budget was finalized, the transfers out from the general fund to the CIP funds, uh, were decreased by two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the net effect of the changes increased the general fund surplus by two hundred and seventy thousand. So, good news. Um, so the staffing changes that I'm proposing for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and, um, these are already in the budget. Um, uh, include two promotions. One of the changes will be in the police department where we're promoting a longtime administrative clerk to an administrative assistant. And then second change will be in administration where we're promoting our part-time management analyst to a part-time senior management analyst slash PIO. And then the final staff addition, um, is going to be a new classification in the city manager's office. And the title will be Assistant to the City Manager. So with my, um, five years' experience here at the city, I've had a good deal of time to review the organizational structure. And, um, that my previous position as Assistant City Manager slash Administrative Services Director, where I oversaw finance, human resources, and risk management, was completely inward-focused on the organization. So I really couldn't provide the kind of complex, complex outward-facing assistant the city manager needed. Um, therefore, I'm proposing to create an assistant to the city manager. And this position will provide highly complex staff assistance to the city manager. Um, will attend council meetings and work sessions, research, respond, and perform necessary follow-up and communications with city management and, um, city constituents. Uh, they will also serve as a management liaison to various boards, committees, and citizen advisory groups. And then, in addition, this position will take over managing our city's affordable housing programs. They will seek and apply for grants, coordinate and work on sustainability and climate action initiatives. And this part, the city affordable housing kind of management, has really not been done at the city before. We've, the planning department has done that. But it's, um, it's really important. It's become really like something visible and, and something that needs to be managed well. Uh, this, this position will have the same salary range as the city clerk. And it'll be, um, I'm proposing it to be funded thirty percent from the Housing Trust Fund and seventy percent from, um, the general fund. And then also with this change, I'm proposing that the Assistant City Manager be removed from the Administrative Services Director classification. Um, because it really is inward-focused, not really an Assistant City Manager, as you would normally see in a city. And if it's, it's vacant right now, if it's filled in the future, um, uh, it would still oversee finance, human resources, and risk management. And, but it will, I'm proposing it remain vacant until the new city manager is hired so that they can determine how that position will be used. Um, could I just comment? Absolutely. Comments? Questions?
Well, I gave you a big hug when you told me this. I have been begging city managers in the past to do this position because I thought it made such great sense. And it's absolutely wonderful. Everybody here is new. They, you know, you have not a lot to compare it to. But it will make a huge difference in the way that the city is managed. So I really, really appreciate. No ego. It's like, I don't necessarily need the help, but we need to do this to make it run right. I'm so, I'm so pleased with your decision. I really appreciate it.
Great, great.
Um, I remember the last year we talked about, um, and I believe this was maybe last summer at some point. Um, a lot of like smaller cities in Sonoma County have the same issue with managing their affordable housing units. And I'm talking about specifically units that currently exist or indeed restricted. And we were talking about, um, possibly sharing that sort of, I guess, role or job with other cities. Is there any sort of update on that? And, because it sounds like this new Assistant City Manager would sort of just do that for Sonoma. And in the past, we had talked about, because it's not going to take a tremendous amount of time to do that, having one person do that sort of in the county for various cities. And I'm just curious.
Well, the county does, um, handle some of the, um, affordable housing. Uh, but, uh, we did hire a contractor to come in and, and just get all, or they're still working on it, but to get all of the affordable housing, get the deed restricted. Know who's in those, um, properties because really, weren't, you, I mean, there's, there's certain things that people need to comply with to be able to use those affordable housing. And that's something that, that, you know, really hasn't been managed well. Um, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware about.
Yeah.
Sharing with other cities. Um, it's a, it's a possibility. Um, but I feel like, uh, if somebody has the, the right experience, we can manage it in-house. And, um, uh, sharing with other cities might, you know, um, and it's a possibility, but it's, it's.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I would just like to follow up a little more on that because I know that was discussed. I think Catati and Sabas, like smaller cities that have the same situation. There was discussion about sort of jointly funding one person to sort of do it. Um, and the only reason I bring that up is because I think, as you described, that Assistant City Manager, or Assistant to the City Manager. I don't know if everyone, anyone has ever seen The Office. There's a whole, there's a whole episode about Assistant to the Regional Manager, Assistant Regional Manager. Anyway. I appreciate this. But anyway, um, uh, what I was going to say before I, um, got off track there was, I guess my only concern about that, because I love the idea of it, as you describe, is dipping into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Right.
Because it's sort of small at this point. We're trying to build it up. And I would be, um, at least supportive of. I guess what, what is the rationale for dipping into that fund versus just using general fund dollars for the?
Um, well, my, my theory on that was because, um, one way to increase that fund is to get some grant funding. And we don't have anybody concentrating on that either. Um, I get notifications all the, all the time about CDBG grants and funding that's, that, you know, we're not taking advantage of. And so that's something that this person would also be concentrating on, that kind of grant funding. Um, we would, I also have in the budget, um, uh, Grant Contractor. That would be more, um, focused on public works, planning, um, transportation, those kinds of, of, of grants. But I feel like somebody who has the experience, has possibly the housing experience, um, would, you know, would really benefit the city. And I think we could spruce up our program quite a bit, so, and increase funding for that, for that fund.
And I, and I have, again, no issue with that. I guess, why not just use general fund dollars to help build? I mean, why use the salary?
I just felt like it was, it's kind of, it's related to the Housing Trust Fund. It's related to, and it's actually within the, um, the guidelines for the Housing Trust Fund. So, that was just a.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, again, there's no, no disagreement with like the role. It's just, I guess, funding the position. And I'm just curious what maybe the rest of the council thinks about that issue.
Right now, you're using seventy percent from the general fund. And then thirty percent from the housing.
Yes, yeah.
So the only thing I see, see is similar going on in the county is that, uh, Sotomayor. But he's over homeless of, I think, four or five cities, and that comes from T O T, I guess, from all the cities. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you're, you're offering, but I know that they do that, uh, up north.
Oh, yeah. No, there was just a discussion like last summer with David Store or others, maybe our former city manager, um, about this, um, potential administrator to you, to work with small Sonoma County cities.
Right. And I just, when I, when I looked out at other cities to see how they were managing their, um, uh, housing programs. A lot of times it was the Assistant to the City Manager who was, who was doing that. And to me, I, I've just, I've noticed just in the last couple of months, like some of our housing, um, our affordable housing is coming up, like the, the contracts are expiring. Um, not a lot, but the, the new ones we have are, you know, um, like sort of eternal contracts, but the, the older ones are not. And so, and then, so there's, I was, we need somebody to manage this, somebody to, who has some experience managing this, so.
I, I just hope that we have so much more affordable housing that we will need somebody to, to manage it. And I think if the intent of the, um, the role is to increase the grants for affordable housing, then that's fair enough. If we start to see that that's not happening, I think that it's fair to relook at it and just, you know, regard it as an administrative job. But, um, you know, we should make the goal that this, at least thirty percent of, you know, should pay for itself. Um, and, you know, I know that there are grants out there. I know that, you know, we could be far more aggressive on that. So, um, you know, I'm supportive of it and, but I'd like to see sort of, you know, progress report to see exactly how much is coming in and how much we're able to expand, um, our affordable housing offerings in the city.
Right. And I think that definitely we would take a look at it every year. We actually take a look at our allocations every year just to make sure that we're, you know, allocating staff correctly to the, you know, to the right departments. And we did do a formal, um, cost allocation plan. And, um, you know, at the time, that was, I mean, it was five years ago, but it was interesting because they had staff allocated a certain way. We did the formal plan and it really came out to be exactly how we were previously allocating it. So, um, but it's, uh, definitely you take a look at it every year because sometimes positions change and they're, you know, uh, they, well, they're not really, you know, working for general funding where they're totally working for water or those kinds of things. So, um, that, that's something we look at every year, but I agree.
I would hope that we would, like, on subsequent agendas, get, know that, oh, we've applied for this grant or, you know, through communications from you, uh, applied for this grant and we just received this or something, just to kind of keep us aware of what, what's going on.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
I guess, you know, I, I certainly support this, this position. But I was thinking a little bit about, um, tapping the, the Housing Trust Fund, uh, for thirty percent. Uh, it, it seems counterproductive to reduce that to the level that it doesn't do much to actually allow us to produce housing. And I guess I would, I would rather see us, uh, at least reduce that percentage or, or try to tap it out of the general fund and hope that grant writing might, uh, supply some of that money back rather than, uh, using the Housing Trust Fund per se to, to fund that position.
How much is the thirty percent? Like twenty-five thousand dollars or?
Well, it's, it's about seventy-six, right, to the general fund? Isn't that what it was? I have, I have, I just said the number, so.
Or you can explain why you're going to put seventy and thirty.
Right.
Which kind of base?
Uh, seventy thousand. It's seventy thousand to the general fund, so it's thirty thousand to the housing trust.
I would just like to see that, that fund accumulate more so that we have a viable fund to do something, I suppose.
And, and we can change the allocation. Um, I, you know, I just thought as far as somebody concentrating on housing and grants and so that, you know, I would just.
In, in theory, I agree with that approach. It's just that the fund is so small. That it's, there's not much available to work with.
No, yeah, and actually, it's, we're, how much? We're putting almost six hundred thousand in this year from T O T, so that's gonna, that's gonna really help. But again, it's.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
We're, we're close to six hundred thousand, putting in, just from the T O T, so. So, again, I mean, that's, you know, if this is a proposal, so if, you know, if council isn't, um, you know, would like to change it to a hundred percent general fund, we can do that, so.
How about the homeless issue? Is it related or you want to include or we have it separate? Because we, recently we talked about maybe coordinator, maybe it's not coordinator this position. They have the, you know, coordinator, this kind of function, you know, I'm wondering this new position where?
Um, we've actually put, um, thirty thousand in the budget previously, and we've talked about that. But there's thirty thousand for, um, a homeless contractor to continue to, you know, because we haven't gotten a report from the, um, our expert. Um, we're, we're hoping to get that next week, but I think that, I mean, we're not solving homelessness. We're getting a report on, on what's out in the valley and how, what we can do to coordinate that. So I would, you know, want to continue until we at least have some, um, focus or, you know, how we're gonna, to, to go forward with that, so. So there's, there's already thirty thousand in the budget for a homeless contractor, so.
So maybe later we discuss more about what time that reasonable, yeah, percentage.
The allocation. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it's okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, please continue.
Um. So on, uh.
I add one more, I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
The, the police, um, the administrative clerk is promoted to assistant. Are we then keeping the?
No.
Is that a new position?
No, it's just a, a promotion, so. Um, they have an, they have an administrative clerk now, and then we're just promoting it to an administrative assistant.
Okay, so where it says, are we then removing the administrative clerk?
Uh, we'll probably complete the class just in case they ever need it, but we don't, but we're not funding it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then I wanted to point out, starting on page eighty-nine, and we're not going to go through them. But, um, are all the general fund department budgets with percentage changes from the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to the proposed, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget? That was something that was requested at the last meeting, so we just, those, um, spreadsheets are in there with those, um, percentage changes. Um, next I'll talk about general fund reserves, and that's right after tab five. Very first page, only page. Oh, I guess it's the first page. Um.
This eighty-nine was city council? Is that not looking?
Oh, that eighty-nine, uh, starting on page eighty-nine are all the department budgets, the general fund department budgets. Last, at the last meeting, uh, um, uh, Councilmember Barnett had requested percentage changes be added. So that's what we did with those, those.
Okay, so I wanted to make a comment again. I think the council's salary should go up to five hundred dollars. The argument against it was, uh, we shouldn't make that big money, even though we make multi-million dollar decisions. And if your goal is to give money to charity, just think, you don't have to give three hundred, now you can give five hundred. So I just wanted to mention that.
And could I say that if we're going to have that conversation, that, um, I, I, I'm, I, I don't disagree. I, but I would like to see something, um, for targeted, so like childcare services. So to make service to this council easier for people to also serve and, and have, uh, a so-called life. And, um, I think that, I don't know how much that would be, but maybe that's part of the conversation that Madeline just brought up. I don't care about the, the, you know, I mean, if that's the will of the board, I'm, I'm happy to go to the council. But I do want to see something for, um, you know, a lot of people do not want to serve on city councils and so forth because they, it's, it's an expense for them. I don't know if that's part of this conversation, but since you brought it up now.
Councilmember Loafy, I mean, I believe that's already in the council protocol resolution that it's part of the reimbursement. I believe that is one of the pieces.
Okay, well, I'd like to believe that too.
I will, no, I, I will sit, I'll look at it again, but I, I remember that being part of.
Okay, well, that would be great.
And that would be an easy way to, even if it's not in there, we could change that and just add it too.
That would be wonderful. And i- if, if we could get that information so that I know people are, you know, considering running for council. It's that time of year, uh, would be, I think, important that people know, um, like they can expect.
And they should, I think they should be a five oh one C three, the nonprofit, not just, if that's what we're talking about.
Well, I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about reimbursement.
Fine, if you're going to give to a charity for reimbursement.
I'm not talking about charities. I'm talking about childcare.
I think that's a great idea. If that's not already in the, um, resolution.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check, because that, that, that's an easy change, yeah.
We should pay for childcare.
And I think it should be childcare slash eldercare as well, because there's a lot of people for whom they are custodians for their, their parents or others. And, um, they're, you know, I think it's an important piece.
Sure. Okay. And then, um, uh, Councilmember Edgar Monti, um, did you want to have, put them on a agenda, uh, to re-increase the, this stipend for, for council?
I think once this issue, I think once this is settled, so people possibly feel more comfortable with that increase, um, yeah, I'd like.
Didn't we just vote on it recently?
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you wanted to know.
I know. So it settles prior.
Well, it doesn't have to be. We're here on this budget.
I don't know when, you can hold it on that list too.
Yeah, I think we did vote on it, but, um, we didn't at that time discuss these other possible options, which you say are there, and that's wonderful. Love to hear that.
Yeah, great, okay. Okay, um. Oh, um, reserves, general fund reserves. So on page, um, I mean, right after tab five, um, is the, um, general fund revert, reserve summary. And again, this is projected because, uh, we haven't audited our twenty-one, twenty-two, um, financials. But it's a pretty good, um, we, we have a pretty good idea where we'll, we'll end up. So, um, what's not on this chart, and I can add it, um, uh, it, it makes it a big chart, so it's not in this chart. But in, um, eighteen nineteen, the general fund had nine point, point four million dollars in reserves. Uh, we started with that. And then in fiscal year nineteen twenty, um, the general fund used four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of reserves due to the pandemic and economic, its economic impacts. So that reduced the total reserve to nine point four million. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the general fund again used one point two million dollars of reserves, um, due to the pandemic. And that reduced our total reserves to seven point seven million.
And the reserves, that stays at seventeen percent or?
Yeah, always, we always, um, allocate that. So of that, we, we allocate seventeen percent for, um, general fund expenditures and then one point five million for emergency reserve. But the total reserves that we have. Um, and then in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we're projecting that we will increase reserves by one point nine million. Um, so that'll, um, we'll end up with nine point seven million back up. And that's because of, partially because of the ARPA funding, but also because we had, um, better reserve revenues than we had anticipated.
And may I ask, one point nine is the ARPA? And, and specifically, what, what can we use that money?
So for, um.
Unless it takes too much time, we can.
Well, in twenty-one, twenty-two, um, the reserves will be one point nine million. ARPA funding was one point three. And so, um, we actually did use it. Um, we could use it to backfill expenses. You can't use it to actually just drop into reserves, but we, um, we actually used it for expenses and then it, it increased our reserves, so. Um, and then, um, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we'll, we'll, we are projecting we'll increase the reserves by one point five million. And that'll bring the reserves to eleven point two. Again, that includes a one point three million in ARPA funding that we're getting this year. We have not programmed that. And part of what, um, the, I think, our retreat, uh, council retreat in August, um, you know, we'll, we could have some discussions on, on where the funding, you know, if we're going to use it, are we going to drop it back into reserves or use it for expenses so that we can increase our reserves? So that's, that's part of that, that discussion. And, um, one thing I did want to mention, and I forgot to say it here, but, um, is we have, um, there is, um, ordinance that says that we will put twenty-five thousand dollars every year into the, um, what's it called?
Public art fund.
Public art fund. And, um, since that was enacted, they've only done it one year. Because right after it was enacted, um, is when they took redevelopment away, and there just was no funding for it. So we have, we haven't really increased that fund except for the first year when we put, put funds in.
But it's not within our parameter. It was with redevelopment.
Um, no, it hasn't. I was just saying with redevelopment, we didn't have enough general fund money to put back into the art fund. But we, every year, so what we do in our resolutions is we say, you know, we, we will not be putting those funds into, into the art fund. Now, we've had some discussions about the, um, cul- cultural arts program. And, um, because we do have some surpluses here, um, you know, I, I would like to talk about, do we want to fund it at twenty-five thousand dollars a year? The percentage of new, um, housing, which is difficult to, um, but, you know, maybe we could change the, um, ordinance to read, um, you know, up to twenty-five thousand, the city council can allocate to the, to the, uh, public art fund. Um, and, but I, I would like to have that discussion when we do our retreat. So, at, when we do the resolution for this budget, um, particular budget, we're, we're going to say that we're not going to do the twenty-five thousand, but I, we'll bring it back, just so you know. We're going to bring it back when we talk about them, okay?
Could I just comment for?
Sure.
Yes, sure.
So for some time now, I have felt that the arts and history need to be at the table, and they're not really. And, you know, I, I, you know, even our visitors bureau and chamber, they don't highlight history. And I think some people actually come here because of this grand and unbelievable history. So it would be nice if we could include his, his historic, whatever that might be. And the council, of course, now, they don't have to agree, but I just think it's time for them to be at the table.
Right. And I think that, that's kind of a, a conversation on the, in the whole cultural arts, um, program that, that, you know, um, I can't think of her name, but she came in.
Audis Lanning.
Yeah, and she came and talked to us at the council about it, and then I've met with her, um, since then, and just talking about getting that program going. Um, it was very expensive. They did it in Hillsburg, um, and, uh, but we could sort of, you know, piggyback on what they've done over there. And then, so I think that's part of that discussion that we should have about the goals and, uh, you know, for, for next year, so.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm glad that it's part of what they're thinking.
Yeah.
Are you proposing to, going forward, bringing twenty-five thousand dollars, putting it into public art or retroactively all the years we have not done?
Yeah, because retroactively, um, for one thing, there was not really funds in the budget to, to put the twenty-five K in. And so what I would, would suggest is, I mean, we have, we have a surplus, um, so that, you know, going forward. But the way that the ordinance reads is very confusing. And so instead of just tie, like they tied it to, they said twenty-five thousand or, um, a percentage of public building. You know, and it's just, it's like a really hard way. And I would just say, let's just say up to twenty-five thousand, you know? And then that would give council discretion on how much to put there, instead of trying to figure out what it was, so. Um, yeah, so there, there is about, I think about seventeen thousand in that fund right now, but it hasn't been, hasn't been used for anything. Although we could have used it for art in the, um, council chambers if we had wanted to, but we did, we didn't do that, so. Um, so anyway, that's, that will be, um, I think that's a further discussion that we need to have, so. Um, okay, um.
Uh, before we go further, my question is seventeen percent of a general fund, the budget expenditure. And how we made a decision for the seventeen percent or?
We, oh, we, uh, yeah, we, the, um.
Big history.
Yeah, it was, we, we, we've gone over that. That is a, I mean, is for, um, Gatsby, um, it's a really, I mean, it's a, it's a good percentage. Um, two months of expenses is, you know, is pretty similar. You can, you can increase it if you want. Uh, we have, we also have the one point five million for emergency reserve, so those can, they can really be tapped together. So, um, you know, so that's, that's something to think about too. But, yeah, we had a long discussion. We figured seventeen percent was a, was a good percentage, um, of revenues.
It was done before this council, so, um, maybe it's something else that they would like to look at.
Yeah, so we did the whole, um, we did a lot of research and we did the whole reserve policy because it hadn't been updated.
Because some cities have fifty percent reserve.
Right, but that's difficult.
But that's.
Yeah, that's difficult, you know.
Yeah.
On, on other.
But we're, we, we felt that it was a good num, well, and maybe this council.
Yeah, and it's, we do have, I mean, for our budget size, we have a, we have substantial reserves. Yeah, and it's, we do have, I mean, for our budget size, we have a, we have substantial reserves, I mean, we're, we're in a good place, even during the pandemic, we did well, so, um, and during the fire, I mean, there's just been certain things, but we've been, we've managed to keep our um, reserves at a good level, so.
Yeah, my question is, because, under two reasons, I look at a business number, the first of all, I know, we are luckily, the, this year, or maybe the next year, is the good a year, is a shining year, and, but, right now, you know, more and more unexpected, and the disaster are coming, so the, I wonder, as we, and gather more in the income, tax more income, if it's possible, we can increase this seventeen percent to twenty three percent or twenty five percent, because in this way, and we can put more money in, out of the saving, just for worst case, worst case scenario in the future, that maybe we can.
I mean, that would be a discussion, I think, for um, for council, and if you wanna increase reserves, um, uh, so, yeah.
Yeah, because. Yeah.
It'd be interesting to look at the, the, how it was done the last time, and probably everything that you shared may have been part of that discussion, I I don't remember.
Yes.
Is there a statutory reserve for city council?
For city council?
Yeah, is there a statutory reserve on a general fund, I mean, for city?
There's best practices, yeah.
Okay, what is the best practice?
So, it's um, it's fifteen percent up to twenty five percent.
Oh, that's quite a range.
Yeah, so, and of course, it depends on, because you're working with cities that have eighty million dollar budgets, as opposed, you know, so,
Right.
really, we're, we're in a very good place for the size of our budget, um, you know, we have a, we have a pretty good reserve, um, so.
I, I feel comfortable with reserve as is, um, I, 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 I think that uh, our, the city is, is doing well, um, the T O T taxes, et cetera, you know, um, tourism is back, we, if, if we're in this position after, pandemic, um, we're doing well, and I think the citizens of the city and those who take advantage of it are, deserve us to, allocate that money in ways that benefit them, and um, you know, I don't think we're running a bank, and um, you know, um, I think the more we invest in our community, it will come back to us, so I worry about, um, I don't think I'm financially imprudent, but, you know, I worry about going too much, going, saving so much that we're now taking away services from people who are paying, their taxes and deserve to have services, so.
I think, and I think that was also discussed.
Yes, yes, yeah, there's a balance.
So that would be great to, to look at all of that, not that I even remember a lot of it, but I mean, I know it was part of it, because uh, we really made a big deal out of the reserve.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I generally agree with Councilwoman Love, I mean, um, I think we all believe fiscal prudence is very important, but if we weathered a once in a century pandemic, and fires, and power shut offs, and we still have substantial reserves, um, you know, moving forward, I think, and I guess this leads to my question, at the end of eighteen nineteen, we had nine and a half million in reserves, and then last year, or at the end of this fiscal year, we have nine point seven, and then projected at the end of next year, eleven point two, do you have a recommendation of if we did want to fund special projects, et cetera, how, much into the reserves we can go?
Well, they, cause when I said it, cause I said this reserve includes a one point three, which haven't, hasn't been programmed.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so, and I think that the, that's really the discussion, you know, we should have going forward, you know, from that funding, you know, the special funding we got from, you know, there, are there programs that we wanna fund, um, from that, and, you know, how much should we wanna increase our reserves, so, um.
And that discussion is recommended to have be at the retreat?
Yeah, I think that's.
Like after, so after we approve the next fiscal year budget?
Yeah, be, yeah, I think so, because it's, what I'm sort of thinking is that really our general fund reserve is the um, is the, is what is, is the one point,
Yeah, we have the one.
One point nine, one point nine minus the one point three, so really, we have six hundred thousand in surplus from the general fund this year, we haven't finished negotiations, there's a couple of things that, um, you know, that, that will probably eat into that surplus slightly, and so, we wanna, we wanna think about that too, but, so we really have, we have a good surplus this year, um, and there's, there's certain things that we talked about funding that, um, that are not in this budget yet, so.
So roughly, six hundred K, you think, to, to program, okay?
Yeah, six hundred, yeah, yeah, so, and then, like, the one point three is the extra gravy that we got. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, when is expected, are the American rescued relief from the founder?
July.
July, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions on the general fund, cause we're gonna turn to the C I P now, in fact, if everybody, yeah? Okay, good, um, so now we're gonna, yeah, okay, no?
I, I do, I'm sorry, one question, are we gonna go back to the general fund at some point to talk about how we fund our community partners, all that kinda stuff?
Uh, we can, um, we, you know, our hope is that we can, uh, we can bring it back on, on June first for adoption, so I didn't, you know, we could, um, uh, we could have a discussion prior to the adoption of that, um, we did get some, uh, and I didn't, we didn't bring it, but we are, we did get the, um, the, the rent, um, like, you know, what it would be if we were charging rent, we do have that number, um, and we can, we can bring that conversation back on the first, prior to budget adoption, if you want, or we could have another study session?
Okay, so yeah, so we have flexibility, and we just have to adopt it by the end of, or before we be, by the June fifteenth or?
Right, and, right, we could actually, I mean, we could, um, you know, although we're all, we're hoping it'll be adopted on the first, but, um, but the, uh, we could definitely bring it, you know, we could have a discussion on the first, and then we could bring it back on the fifteenth, so.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, so let's move back to pages, um, which tab? Page six. And then, we're gonna move right into um, C I P, water cemetery, and I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, Kristen Oriana.
Thanks, and thanks a lot for the opportunity to present this today, uh, we have a lot of information that we're prepared to give you, and it includes, uh, project narratives, project budgets, we're gonna be talking about our building and facilities area, creeks and drainage, parks, transportation, and water C I Ps today, and I guess that, you know, because it's so, such a lot of information, that if we get to one that, you wanna break out and, and get a little more information on, just go ahead and feel free to, uh, ask the question during, and we'll just take a quick break from, moving through the packet and talk about specific things, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Kristen Oriana.
All right, I think I'm kicking it off with building, and I'm just gonna run through each one of these different divisions, and all of the projects kind of associated, and then, I'll stop for questions, but you can interrupt me if things come up as we go. Um, so in our building and facilities, capital improvement projects, um, the city's buildings and facilities are critical assets, where city and community businesses and activities are conducted, daily maintenance of the buildings and facilities is provided by city staff with assistance from special contractors. Funding for capital improvement to city buildings and assets with an estimatable useful life and replacement costs is set aside per defined schedules for annual trust, annual transfers to the city's long-term building maintenance fund, funding for unforeseen capital improvement needs, or to accommodate different uses as budgeted as needed and identified, so our accomplishments for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two is corrected the basement water intrusion in Carnegie Hall, we completed electrical, mechanical, and structural design for converting the Depot Park Museum H B A system, H V A C system, from natural gas power to electrical power, and we completed transition of city hall, the Carnegie Library Building, the Corporation Yard, and the police department and council chambers to a hundred percent L I D lighting. And the next fiscal year, our goals are to complete construction of the all-new H V A C system at the Depot Park Museum, uh, assess the fire station one for scheduled replacement of flooring treatment, installation of automated door operators, and assessment of the timber structural members, and conduct a, construct a new motor operated rolling security gate at the Corporation Yard. And then we're gonna roll into our specific project sheets around those goals, the first one is V F two, that's our public works, safety and facility security at the Corporation Yard, and this project is using a, a portion of funding that was approved in the twenty one, twenty two budget, but was not used for security at our Corporation Yard, to replace the gate that was damaged, um, in an accident, with a more secure gate with a tin pad installation. Um, our next project is the city hall emergency power generator, V F four, uh, we've applied for some H M P funding for that generator, uh, we don't know yet if we're successful in that application, which is why it's not programmed in this year's funding, but it's pushed out a couple of years. If we're not successful with the current application, we'll have to apply again, get it? And the final project in our building group is the Depot Park H V A C project, um, engineering and design of this system has been completed in twenty twenty one, and the city hopes to solicit bids for qualified contractors and complete the construction of the new H V A C in the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Uh, we have some funding carried over from the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, but we're looking for an additional twenty thousand dollars to complete this project that year. Pause there, see if you have any questions in our building group.
Um, we're, we're on building group, we're not at Fire Creek yet.
Would, um, signage for, for the, um, for the museum, the depot museum be part of this, or no?
I don't believe it's in the current thing, but I will ask the Corporation Manager.
It, it was brought up to me just, just yesterday, that, um, someone who helps out there feels that, people don't know it's there, that needs a little bit more awareness and signage, that, um, because there's some great stuff going on there, and, I, I don't know if it's part of this budget or not, so I thought, I thought I'd bring it up as a citizen ask.
So that wasn't contemplated in the scope for the H V A C replacement project?
Well, it's not H V A C, of course, but yeah.
So, um, it, it wasn't part of, uh, C I P V F eight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll move us on to creeks and drainage, capital improvement program. See, the city's storm drain systems protect the buildings and streets sidewalks throughout Sonoma from flooding when it rains, and helps the citizens, businesses, and visitors go, to work and shop and conduct businesses conveniently, uh, as part of this program is also the implementation of our stormwater pollution prevention plan, to minimize stormwater-related pollution to the maximum extent practical, and this program helps the city comply with stringent, costly, and largely unfunded state and federal mandates to protect water quality in California's creeks and rivers. The creeks drainage, uh, capital improvement program has identified several flood reduction projects that are not otherwise identified in the master plan, and, because they are not competitive for state and federal grant funding, um, in twenty one, twenty two, we've accomplished, the city continued to restore the native wetland vegetation in the open channel along First Street West frontage of Depot Park that was constructed in twenty twenty, and the city restored native vegetation and secured a permanent maintenance easement for the open drainage channel, providing surface drainage in the Hayes Street area. In fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, the city is seeking grant funding to complete a drainage improvement project identified in the city's, storm drain master plan along Broadway, uh, just north of Leveroni, that will include a trash separator, uh, just south of Leveroni, and the city is seeking grant funding opportunities to develop a wetland restoration project in St. Francis West. Into our individual projects, C D one is the stormwater trash reduction system, and.
What page are you on, Ariana?
I am on page twelve.
Thanks.
Um, this, uh, C D one is a project that's looking to carry over some funding from fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, uh, it's, to implement our trash reduction requirements that are put down by the state under our stormwater program, um, and today we've fund baskets in some identified inlets that are around high priority areas, um, we're holding onto the carryover funding and not programming any new funding in this fiscal year, but are looking out, in future years, for larger amounts of funding after we get our case to permit from the state water board, and have better idea around exactly what the requirements for trash are going to be in our stormwater permit. Um, the next project, Broadway and.
Can I ask a question about this project? I'm just looking at the picture, who, who empties those baskets?
Uh, Tommy at our street's main entrance.
Hey, so they, that, they're, they empty, and how often do they have to, you know, probably because we haven't done it yet, you don't know?
We have fifteen of them, so he does them before the storm season, and then two or three times afterwards, right, until they stop filling up?
Yeah, so, so the, what they do is they collect trash mostly through the dry season, um, we clean them out, and then through winter, they'll pick up a lot more leaves and vegetative debris.
Okay, great, thank you.
And this is one of those unfunded state mandates?
It is.
Thank you.
Um, the second project in the stormwater group is the Broadway Leveroni flood reduction and trash capture project, um, we use some grant funding this year to do a conceptual design for a large, uh, hydrodynamic trash separator that would be located just south of Leveroni, um, and, we're seeking some grant funding right now from the E P A through the San Francisco Water Quality Improvement Fund to fund the construction of that trash capture device. Uh, in addition to that, we correct, um, a drainage issue that was identified in the storm drain master plan in twenty eleven, um, just a little bit north of Leveroni, um, and upsize one of the infrastructure leases that, in front of the trading company. Um, so we're not looking for any funding this fiscal year, but just in twenty three, twenty four, for successful in that grant application, we'll be looking for some general funds to meet the master requirement of that grant. Pause after creeks and drainage, see if you guys have any other questions. Right, going on to parks, capital improvement projects. The city's parks are vital to maintaining the quality of life in Sonoma, parks contribute to the health of our citizens and the economic and environmental well-being of our community. Daily maintenance of our urban parks is provided by city staff and landscape contractors, uh, that perform mowing and trimming in the neighborhood parks. The C I P projects are funded through the general fund and through a couple of individual funds, Prop sixty eight money, uh, Parks Measure M, and Quimby funding. Um, the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two accomplishments, we've worked cooperatively with Sonoma Overlook Trail Stewards Volunteer Group to improve three sections of the overlook trail, we completed the budget and schedule for the Montini Connection Trail, which is planned for construction this fiscal year upcoming. Uh, we completed the Prop sixty eight grant application to fund approved design of the new recycling waste receptacles for the plaza, and initiated, uh, the city and Sonoma Parks Needs Assessment to further guide maintenance improvement projects for our parks. Uh, fiscal year twenty two, twenty three goals, we're initiating construction of the Depot Park Enhancement Project, the Plaza Enhancement Project, and, the Plaza Park will use the six, Prop sixty eight per cabinet funds, um, complete design and construction of the Montini Connector Trail, and complete designs, and move forward construction elements to improve Penelli and Olson Park using Quimby Act funds. Our first project is the Montini Connector Trail Project, uh, let's see, in fiscal year twenty twenty one, the project completed a feasibility study, uh, including analysis of alignment alternatives to connect the Valley of the Moon Trail with the Holstein Trail along, uh, the Montini's property on the west of the reserve, um, we've received, um, competitive quotes from the ACE contractors that helped us complete the overlook trail, and we're hoping to complete this project in the spring of twenty three, we're gonna move forward, um, if this budget is approved with our CEQA permitting and public outreach in the summer and fall of twenty two, and do construction when the soil's a little wetter. Um, from that, we're gonna use carryover funding that was approved in the twenty one, twenty two budget, and we're looking for an additional twenty thousand dollars from the general fund, to complete that project. Right, project P seven, Penelli Park, um, this project, um, was pre- previously in twenty one, twenty two, uh, we've identified it in our needs assessment as a priority area, and we have one of the smaller play structures that we'd like to potentially replace with this Quimby money that's assigned for this park, uh, we have no additional requests in twenty two, twenty three for that. Um, P eight, Olson Park Improvement Funds, um, the city staff evaluated Olson Park as well, as part of our needs assessment, and are prioritizing rehabilitation, um, implementation of the Quimby Act funds. These funds will be combined with general fund dollars, Parks Measure M funds to rehabilitate parts of this, the park, I think the neighborhoods identified, um, with, drinking fountain, some of the flat work needs to be improved, and there's an area just to the north of the basketball courts where there's picnic ground that could be utilized, so. Um, this year, uh, our goals are to begin the process with public input on the proposed improvements, followed by design and engineering, and drawings to advance the project forward, hopefully in the following fiscal year, and we have the carryover Quimby Act fund from a developer. from a development that was in the neighborhood, $80,166. We're requesting additional general fund dollars of $30,000 to do the design and are hoping to do some of our Parks Measure M money for implementation of the project at Olson. And keep checking through. All right, Depot Park Enhancement Project. The Depot Park Enhancement Project includes improvements to the bathroom, adding two water bottle filling stations, bike parking, transfer receptacles. And signage, restroom improvements include interior and exterior painting, new doors, additional lighting, ADA accessibility, and landscape and drainage enhancements that will remove pollutants in the stormwater runoff. In March of 2021, the Community Service and Environmental Commission recommended the project for Measure M Parks For All funding. The Parks For All Measure M is the one cent, one eighth cent sales tax to Spark County and City Parks for the next 10 years. The project will hold in a required by retention feature to offset impervious surface created by the Chase Street Bridge. In 2021, '22, the design will be completed for the enhancement project. That is just going to be completed in '22, '23. Construction is scheduled for the fall of '23. Maybe the spring. We can keep moving ahead a little faster. And we have carryover funding of $200,000 from last fiscal year for, from Parks Measure M, and we're looking for an additional $50,000 to complete the project. All right, Plaza Park Enhancement Project, P10. The proposed enhancement at the plaza may include the trash recycling receptacles, bench upgrades, bicycle parking. The city is eligible for Prop 68 per capita funding in the amount of $185,015. The Prop 68 per capita funds require a 20% match of local funding. The grant application was submitted in December, and our project was accepted. Contract and design work is underway, and we're hoping to have the project completed in, by the end of 2023. This particular design for the receptacles has previously been accepted by the CSSEC. I believe that you guys saw it. The only change would be that we're hoping to include composting for the new 1383 laws.
Can I talk about this one?
Yeah, and I'm done, so you go.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate everything. So we're eligible for Prop 68 funds, but have we received them?
It's a reimbursement. So we submitted the grant application that said that we're going to theoretically do this project, and they accepted this as an eligible project, and we do it, and we apply for reimbursement.
And, and it's, we definitely get it?
Yep, it's already, we've signed the contracts.
Okay, thank you. On this one, I'm just curious how the, how far along in the process the design work is and everything. I was hoping that we could create sort of a master plan, and that's something I wanted to help fund for the plaza and the connectivity to Depot Park. And that will include sort of a, you know, aesthetically connected benches and receptacles and bicycle parking and lights and everything. And I feel like we just sort of do things one at a time, and they're not sort of all connected in some sort of general master plan. And so I'm just curious about that.
Sure, that's a master plan. This funding can fund replacement or implementation dollars. So we put work that, under their previous city manager, we put work that we were going to do these receptacles with this funding. I think that we can potentially ask for an adjustment. We'll not fund planning. So we can't do a master plan with this money. It would have to be implementation dollars. But if the council wants to run a master plan under some other funding source, we could use that money.
Yeah, well, I mean, we should talk more about that, obviously. Like, for example, there's a little image of benches here, and we haven't seen any of the designs, at least at the council level. And I know it went through the CSSEC, but I believe that's it. Tonight, that no longer exists.
Right, and we haven't, they're, I mean, we're hopefully forming the pros tonight.
Yeah.
And then there, I mean, we haven't discussed like a Parks Master Plan, but I, that some of the funding could come from Measure M for a Parks Master Plan. So my question on this, because we've already applied for the grant, if we, you know, like if we stepped back, how long do we have to request reimbursement?
We have to have the project completely done by the end of 2023.
Oh, 2023. So that's the following year, okay.
And is this primarily for the receptacles?
Yes.
So the receptacles look fine to me, and I'm just curious how quickly we can get going on that. Because I, I, we have talked about the receptacles in the park for five years.
Right.
And I just, maybe I'm new at this. I don't understand why it takes so long. And I know it's, I just don't know. It's very frustrating for me.
I'm new at this too.
I know, so can we, is it, how quickly can we get those receptacles?
Yeah.
Well, they've been on their way for years.
Right, so this is, this is scheduled for this year, right?
This is scheduled for this year. The, the last step in terms of this particular funding was that that application needed to go into the state at the end of last year and have them approve that this was an eligible expense for this particular pot of money. So we've done that. It is, they're okay with it. So if everybody is acceptable with this design and we want to do composting, we can move forward with this.
Is to delay the fact that we are using these state funds that it just sort of lengthens the process in terms of just making sure we're eligible?
That's for this particular question, yeah.
So, and this is sort of a discussion topic that we're not going to really focus on today. But in the future, I think we need to start talking about this, and we've talked about it before, and a member of the public has brought this up. The TID is up for renewal in a year, like two or three years.
Two years, yeah.
And so they take, the tourist improvement district takes 2% of the TOT every year. And because you can only, as a hotel, charge so much before the TOT sort of gets too high, they're sort of eating into what I believe should be the city funds. And what is 2% of TOT a year? Like over a million dollars? Well, let's just say it's a million dollars-ish. I mean, if we're putting, 1% is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we're putting 600,000 in, so that's 1.2 million.
Yeah, right.
So I think we need to, and because things seem to take a while, we need to start talking about this and be ready in two to three years when this expires. I personally think we should change the tourist improvement district to a plaza improvement district. And we could be getting a million dollars a year to fund the plaza, or, we've talked about this before. And perhaps that would take some of the pressure off some of these state reimbursements and get some of these things going. Because I think, I know that the vast majority of TID funding goes to advertise. The hotels come together and advertise Sonoma. And I think continuing to pour more money into our plaza is the best advertisement for Sonoma there is, because the locals obviously benefit, number one, and obviously our visitors benefit from it as well. And so, you know, I just, it's frustrating, and I know this is not Public Works or anyone's fault. It's just, it is frustrating to me how long it takes to make improvements in our plaza. And I think if we had a source of funding from the TOT in a plaza improvement district, I think we would really be able to see a lot of great, you know, additions and benefits to our plaza that would benefit everybody. And so I just, I'm using P10 as a launching point to sort of discuss. We need to start thinking about that.
I just, just to reply to the suggestion, I have nothing necessarily against a suggestion, except I hate not taking money from the state when it's available to us. So I don't want to get rid of that option. And I'd like to ask a couple things. Were the bathrooms included in this plaza enhancements? I mean, I happened to be there yesterday, and...
It's utilitarian.
It's, well, it wasn't working properly, shall we say. I mean, if, if my sink was like that at home, I would be calling someone to fix it. So, I mean, I would try myself, but I'm not very good at it. So I, I think that that should be in there somewhere. I mean, there's a lot of people in the plaza, especially on Tuesday nights. And, and I'm sure it's a deferred maintenance type of item, but it, it just needs constant. I mean, you can't, you know, you can't keep it up to, up to date fast enough, it's, it's so, it's so used. As far as the benches are concerned, I know that's just a placeholder, and we'll probably look at benches, but wrought iron benches, I happen to like. I think they're sturdier, and they will last the test of time. But that's the kind of bench I'd also like to see in other places to expand the plaza. I've talked about it a lot. I, I received a letter that also referenced benches, and I think that it's important, especially south of the plaza on Broadway, to have benches. We see how well-used the chairs are in front of Williams Sonoma, and that, that's kind of them to put those there. But if you're going to ask people to walk and bike, you have to have places for them to sit along the route, and there really isn't any place. And there's some really obvious places where benches, and it would sort of expand the plaza. So in, in sort of tagging on to Vice Mayor Barnett's suggestion about a plaza improvement area, I hope that that is, expands to, you know, a little bit further, and it doesn't end sort of at the intersection of Broadway and Napa. So, because I think that that, that will help. It also helps the merchants south of the plaza who, you know, historically have, even though they're relatively close, seem to struggle in getting people down there. But if you have, you know, nice benches in a tree to sit down, you take your coffee over there, you sit down, you look in the window, you say, "What's that?", you walk in, you know. I think that, that helps. And I think our Chamber of Commerce and so forth will, would like that. Since I mistakenly brought up signage during an HVAC conversation, I'm happy to see the Depot Park Enhancement have, have the signage piece in there. That's wonderful. One thing I would like to say is that I sort of look at Sonoma like a grid, because we are sort of a grid, you know, with First Street East and First Street West and so forth, that there's really no improvement for the southwest quadrant of Sonoma in these plans. And the, there's a lot of people that live in southwest Sonoma, including myself. And we've been talking about that land that's zoned for a park on, on MacArthur and Fifth Street West. And I'd like to see some work being done to investigate creating a new park. I don't know when the last park was created in Sonoma, that's a question. But I know that the folks in southwest Sonoma, especially in the mobile home park community, many of whom don't drive, and would really benefit from having a park close to where, you know, they live. So I, it's hard for me to want to support this section when I see an entire quadrant of our city where there are a lot of people who live there, who don't avail themselves of an overlook trail, who have a difficulty, you know, going to the plaza or Depot Park, who certainly are not anywhere near Pinelli Park, but would love to have something small for them. So I strongly encourage that we add something into the, to benefit our folks in southwest Sonoma.
I, I agree. I agree with Sango and the council. And right now, we are not only just for the maintenance, yeah, majorly looks like the maintenance. And also financially, we are able, we should do some improvements. Especially, you know, the plaza and the bathroom, that is, many, many people are complaining, you know. For, and each individual also have this kind of same experience. So I'm wondering if then the next fiscal year and 2023, you know, maybe do we need to do some of the research? Or what kind of the improvements for major bathroom, that, you know, the upgrade or redesign? Or so the, maybe we can think in? Because we is kind of the, and the budget just based on, you know, let it go. And a lot of the money just carry over forward from the previous year. So right now, this is a good year. And I also agree that we, we shouldn't spend the money instead of the saving, in, in, improve our quality.
I, I agree with that. But the other thing too is that this last year has been somewhat of a challenge here, because we haven't had a public works director for part of the year, and there's, so we've had a little bit of turnover. So part of that carryover is, is, is because of that. So, but I, we are, like, we're, we actually are going to be looking at the bathrooms. We just had a, we just, you know.
Well, on this, go ahead.
What I was going to say is, I think for the bathrooms, what I recommend is a two-pronged approach, and that's, that's to, to look at capital improvements. But the, the technology available to us can never get us totally out of the operational characteristics of keeping a public restroom in a presentable state, especially through very long days, especially very busy days, especially within some intoxicated patrons. And, and so there, there might be more of an operational analysis that needs to be done to see if we have the right staffing at the right times to provide that.
And honestly, it wasn't about the messiness. It was that the water doesn't work in the sink. Okay, so, I mean, it, you know, I get it that it gets messy at the end of the day. I've been to big events before. I know what it's like. But literally, the water wasn't flowing, and the dryer wasn't working. And things like that, or whatever it was.
They just put a new one in there.
The new one. There's a new drawer. Go to the first one as a journal.
I, you know, I'm just reporting what I experienced.
I worked on that for like two or three years.
I know, and, and honestly, I know how much it's used. And it's, and because we know how much it's used, let's acknowledge it's used a lot and that we're going to have to, you know, deal with that and, and make sure. But the, the, people are, are more aware of it because of COVID. They wash their hands and they're upset when the water isn't, there's no water and there's no soap. So I think it's something we have to consider.
So who's, I'm, I, oh, I'm sorry. Who is responsible? I mean, I can't imagine Mr. Berger actually being totally responsible.
We have some part-time staff that are pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, so currently we have one FTE that's staffed by two part-time staff. And their primary job duty is to maintain those restrooms through the weekends and every morning, as well as the public restrooms at Depot Park. So we have staff set up for it for one service a day. We can certainly evaluate whether that's adequate.
And my concern has never been how it looks. My concern has been how it operates, you know, the, what you've been talking about. Because I think they really have a, make a good effort.
Yeah.
From the beginning, I think it's just utilitarian. There's nothing nice about that bathroom. I don't know about the men's, but it's just, you know, it's used for that purpose. There's not one pretty thing in there. And so, you know, they're, they're, thank you. I think there are rooms for improvement. But I think it's a lot, well, no, I can't, it's not Yosemite. Go to Yosemite and you'll know how bad things are. That's okay. But thank you for, thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
Well, and these are great discussions to have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Council wants certain things brought up that are, you know, inherent and have been noticed a few times and brought up by different people. We're definitely interested in hearing them. Yeah.
So yeah, because right now we are preparing a budget. So if the possible, because this is not finalized. If you can give us some of the numbers and either what kind of improvements on the design or even you said, wow, this is a big project. We needed to do research. What kind of, usually you can do an in-house work. If not, you know, also we are ready to pay, you know, those kind of the professional service. What kind of the, the, you know, quality bathroom for the plaza? Because the people, if a visitor a new place, number one is the landscaping. And another thing is to look how to go in the bathroom. Yeah, that is impressive a lot.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say I support Councilmember Lowe's idea about that park and southwest Sonoma. I think that's very important. And I would like to consider putting that in this capital improvement budget. And something that does concern me is that we could put it in here. But then, like many other projects, obviously, it sort of takes a while to be executed. And so I think that brings up a discussion which, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or at some point about staffing. I mean, I know I brought it up at the last meeting, whether you guys need more employees. I don't know if that's, you know, I mean, to me, obviously, some of this, like whether it's cemetery or our parks or our bathrooms, I mean, it just comes down to manpower sometimes. And so if we do have a surplus, maybe we should start thinking about that. I mean, again, I'm not a municipal finance professional. But, you know, and also, I would also encourage reaching out to the TID. I, they seem, I'm sure they're doing quite well this year with our TOT receipts. And I think perhaps they might be open to contributing some funding to maintaining.
Are you talking part-time or?
Well, either or. I mean, you know, those bathrooms are in the same building as the visitors' bathroom. And I think it would be a win-win for everybody to have nice bathrooms for not our, just our residents, but our visitors. So perhaps they would be willing to part with some of their funds.
Another question, yeah, maybe is not related. But we, on this and on the budget, we never see anything related with Casa Grande and the parking space. Because this is state property. But how we work with them, you know, what kind of expenses they take responsibility? Because work with the state also is our, you know, the councils, you know.
Yeah, so actually, we do have a meeting set up with for Casa Grande, uh, next week. Anyway, you know, we did a parking study and the, we identified some individuals as who who can help us and we're gonna proceed with, you know, discussions on, you know, what we've originally talked about. Even if we can't, part of the problem with Casa Grande is that you can't excavate. You know, there's, it becomes quite a process because of the historical aspects. We have to have an archaeologist there. But just to resurface, we've talked about this, we've talked about, you know, resurfacing and restriping. And so, yeah, we definitely are talking about that. So there is not funding in this particular budget. We haven't talked about that yet, but because we're still in the, in talks with them. But, you know, that would probably come forward as a, like a budget adjustment.
And that would be great to, I'm sorry to understand the status.
Right now, yes.
Because this has been going on for, I don't know, five years?
Right, so we did, I mean, it's, I know this has been.
Nobody's fault.
Yeah, so, so actually, I'm, you know, I'm excited. We've identified it.
The State Department of Parks is frightened. We had to wait for that.
Yeah, we have, we have an individual identifying. We have a meeting set up with them. I can't remember when it is, but anyway, so we're moving forward on that.
Yeah, move. And also, we can take advantage of this election because Cecilia and Raina and then her in the district falling a cover Springs area and also in the city. She is kind of the, you know, this is the new district for her. She wanted to make some of the suggestions for us. Because yesterday, Sandro and I met her. And also, she is very ready to support us. This is an assembly member. And also, we have the senator, Bierda, and also his office also is very positive.
Yeah.
So any issues, we can work with the state and move forward a little bit. Because year by year, we, but anyway, you know.
So are you ready to move on to transportation?
Is there one thing before we move on about the park?
Cause I have something also.
Yeah, okay. So we, when we did our parks assessment, we totally identified that particular lot on Fifth Street West that for a potential park. There's potential Quimby money coming through that would fund that park. And we were kind of waiting for the pros to get set up. So we were doing it in conjunction with the master plan and some folks with some guidance on how we wanted to see that developed, which is why we didn't put anything regarding that in this particular budget. We could certainly move some money to kind of start a conceptual design, but it does take a while. But we noticed it.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. I think it would be great to put something, when we go to approve this, I think it would be very important to put something in there so they feel like they've been heard and acknowledged. Because it is a large population center. Most of the people that live in that section of Sonoma are year-round residents. It's, you know, it's not a lot of tourist area. And they, they comment that, you know, a lot of money is spent in the plaza as it, as it should be, and I support. But, you know, here are the folks who are living here every day, live there for many, many years. And they really want something, you know, that is for, for them. And it would mean a lot. So thank you. I really appreciate that comment.
It also kind of highlights when we did the assessment, there's kind of a park desert in that area, which is, I think, what you're saying. So we definitely thought.
Exactly. And, and one of the things that you might not know, because if you go on to the mobile home park, it, you see a lot of, you know, open space and green. It's very pretty over there. They're not allowed to have their dogs there. So which you wouldn't know unless you were aware of the rules. So having a dog-friendly park nearby is a big deal to them because for many of them, that is their companion. And they can't have their dog on the, on that particular property, even though there's lots of green space and it's beautiful. So I was not aware of it, but I've been spending a lot of time over there talking to the residents. And this has come up many times. So I really appreciate your consideration and including something in there. Though I think you'll make a lot of people very happy by that.
And in terms of the bathroom, we do have a capital improvement project that's kind of set up and has been, and was packaged before for the bathrooms. It's in the building section, not in this park money section. And just with our staff turnover and everything, I wasn't really sure where to take it. So that's why I didn't put it in here. But I think we could probably work together and come up with at least what our plan is and put some money towards that.
So I'd like to go back to page sixteen, which my dog and I referred to as squirrel park. Because there were so many squirrels there. He loved going there when he was alive. But I wanted to, you mentioned Quimby and that was very new for this council. I don't know, you know, it was just, and the person that brought it up was actually Logan Harvey. So you or Mr. Berger could explain what Quimby Act and how that fell under that.
Uh, this, well, Chris is gonna have to help me with the actual development, if you know it. But it says in here, it doesn't have here, but there was that, a development, a small like subdivision that happened near that park. And Quimby's are like a park in Lutley. So when you do a development, you have to pay a certain portion of money into this fund to develop a park or if you don't do one as part of the subdivision. And so I don't know what development it was, but it's really near Pennelli Park.
There was, there was a lot split about one block away from the park.
That funded this thirty-two thousand dollars and sitting in that park in Lutley for this particular park. And it can't be used for maintenance. It has to be used to do something to improve the park. So we can replace things or include new things, but we can't, you know, retreat that.
Yeah, because I think Sue, it's brought money to the city. Is that right? The Quimby Act on some.
Yes, yes, just like she's saying that we've had this money in the Quimby Fund for this particular park. And you said there's potential Quimby funding for, for the website? There are some developments coming down that if they come to fruition would be tomorrow. Right, so.
Well, the Mockingbird project is right there.
We have money from Mockingbird. Right, so, right, so, so there is, the funds go into that, that Quimby fund. So they're, they're available for, and we could certainly identify a new project for that. So and bring back the bathrooms.
So you, you said that you had something set up with Casa Grande meeting somebody? Are you running any of that through the ad hoc committee that we have formed to deal with that? Or are you gonna just handle it with staff?
The, I'm sorry, which, the traffic?
No, we have the.
Oh, there's a Casa Grande ad hoc?
We have the, you know, the subcommittee, yeah. Ad hoc committee, yeah, was formed the last year.
But we did, we certainly can, we can run that by you. I think this, this is sort of just a, a kind of, I mean, you know, meeting this person. And I mean, they were identified through the traffic study that we have a new person that we can contact. And so these, but we could certainly run it by, or we can meet with them and then just see what their. Cause I, I wasn't involved before, but I do know that there was a lot of pushback and it would seem like an incredible amount of funding that we would have to provide to just use that parking lot. And, you know, we're talking about, well, you know, if we maintain it and improve it, you know, why would we be paying so much? So anyway, so we're, that's kind of the thing. But we could do an ad hoc committee prior to. But you know, Mike, I can't remember when it's set up. I.
No, I'd have to check.
Yeah, it wasn't, isn't until, it's, I don't think it's until July, right? Because of the timing, I mean, everybody was out, so.
I can take a look.
Okay. I don't know that I've had anybody yet, but anyway.
If, if we're talking about Casa Grande, I understand the need to probably resurface and restripe. But the more money we put into it and make it more attractive to the people that are hanging out there at night, like with racing and all that kind of stuff, I think a gate needs to also be part of that.
And the gate is the, that's sort of the one problem about it because it, because you have to excavate, excavate a little bit further when you get in. So then there's the archaeological dig kind of whole problem.
Well, there's some designs proposed for that gate that didn't require activation.
So.
Well, I just wouldn't approve it.
That was being pursued by the previous city manager, but it's kind of fallen by the wayside.
They didn't, did they not accept the gate, I think? Wasn't there? I'm sorry.
I don't know if it ever got to the state enough to.
Well, and I think that part of it was, yeah, I mean, they were working with local, more local. And I'm, I'm not sure where this person is, but we can, we can find out further. I, I don't, because again, I was, I'm new to this particular thing. We just, I was excited that we, we finally have a contact and that maybe we could move forward with the.
From the State Department, the Parks Department?
Yeah, the Parks Department.
Yeah, yeah. So in our traffic study, person has identified this person. So we just, you know, we wanna, I mean, it's a, it's a, certainly an asset for the city if we could use that parking lot. I mean, we use it already, but it's, you know, it's poorly striped and.
And I think there are the signage, a lot of those things that go along with it.
Right, and we've already, we put the speed bumps there, but I know there are some, some issues.
July twenty-one.
July twenty-one?
Placeholder at this time.
Yeah, because we haven't really set the meeting yet, but July twenty-one.
So mid-July.
So if you want to meet prior to, I'm sorry, council.
Aren't we dark in July?
You are, but you can have an ad hoc meeting as well. It's up to you.
Well, I was just wondering if staff is also, yeah.
It is still working, right?
Well, it might be a lot of vacations.
Part of the vibe, I'm joking. Yeah, there won't, there is a lot of vacations. What we've identified that date is that we would all be available. So, yeah, so we're, we're still open in July. It's just council is at meeting, so.
Right now, we are meeting already around in one, in one and a half hour. Do we need a break or we continue or because it's so long?
We have to, like, public improvement.
Oh, yeah.
Because last time we did public at the end and we ran out of time, we weren't.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
That's, that's up to council. Normally, we wait till the end, but it's up to you.
And I, I, you know, like to, because the audience, you know, not a lot of people. Before they forgot, I wanna, yeah, tell, it's, it's gonna fine, yeah.
But what we've discussed, not the whole chain of funding.
Yeah, yeah, no, yes.
Before we get to transportation, just like.
Yeah, if anyone are there.
Yeah, if, yes, if any, yeah, let me open to public.
Yeah.
If any comments and, uh, thank you.
I know it's sort of uncomfortable. There's no podium for you to stand at. I'm sorry about that.
I saw my picture on a video from last week, one of the meetings, and I had to stand up there. It looked, it looked like Father Christmas. And so now I'm happy to sit down and read to you some of my wish list that goes to Santa Sonoma.
And are they what we've talked about so far?
Yes, I'm gonna be talking, well, I hope it's in the right place. I'm not sure. I, this is the first time I've seen this package, just like you. And so that was one of my comments, by the way. So I have a wish list to Santa Sonoma of nineteen items.
Okay.
Okay, I hope you all enjoyed reading them. I apparently was, had my ear to the ground well enough to include a number of items that have been discussed this morning already. I'm also very happy that the president of the Sonoma Valley Historical Society has come in. Because I want to make a, one comment only of the nineteen. And of course, it turned out to be item number thirteen. And that is, and I will read it to you. "The city of Sonoma to assume responsibility for the external maintenance of all structures owned by the city irrespective of what an original lease might have said." I mean, the exteriors, including roofs, painting, windows, for example, the Marcy House. Patricia, I included that. And the Masonotti House, and I'm not sure what the status is of the vintage house, although I know you give them lots of money. And they do lots of good things. "This will free up more time for these groups to focus on programs rather than fundraising for maintenance work on properties that belong to the city." As part of my duties at the Sonoma League as executive director, I'm supposed to engage in fundraising. "I found it a little ingenious for me to go out and ask people to give money because our dues are so low that they do not cover anything but barely the monthly expenses plus donations plus the sale of the poker house structure. We're floating on that. We don't have money to go out and do major capital improvements." And so I'll, I'll go back up. It's disingenuous for me to go out and raise money from people to pay for repairs and capital improvements on properties that the city owns. I think you need to step up and take some responsibility for that. You do have enough money. I'm not a big fan of affordable housing. That's for developers, not for the city. You need to do something about the building department, about getting permits approved very easily. But back to the nonprofits, you can't expect us to go out and do your work. We need to focus on programs and keeping the organization going as opposed to the structures, which we enjoy having very much and we're taking good care of. But it's getting out of hand to do anything because our remodel was done, I think, Patricia, two thousand eight, two thousand seven. And things are beginning to need attention. Anyway, please read and enjoy my list. I think some of those don't need to be waited for for five years. I think some of them can be taken care of quite easily this year. And I think you could push some money around to do so. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you said that we should go to Paris for a committee meeting in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, more?
My second.
Yeah.
Councilmembers, staff, and the public appreciate the opportunity. Tom Collin, eighteen-eight fifty Robinson Road. I appreciate this meeting. This is, we're into the details of the capital plan. And I have a number of specific things. I hope you keep notes so that maybe we can answer these questions today. On the buildings, page seven of the packet, the fire station, I noticed that there's a structural question there. I've not heard this before. I was just wondering what the structural problem might be in this relatively new building. Two, on the floor, page nine, it's quite clear that two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, even though grant-funded, is a significant amount of money for a transfer switch and a generator. And in particular, we might, the city might want to look at electric batteries as a source of backup power at that facility. Particularly given that grant funding from Sonoma Clean Power might be available. I believe there's grant funding at the state level also. And that batteries could additionally be used in the demand management capacity to reduce the city's overall power bill if it's improper. We very much appreciate the comments of the council members around the parks program. The need to coordinate the landing, redesign the plaza with this capital budget. I feel confident that that's gonna happen in this new council. Specifically with respect to on P six, and I think it's the subsequent park programs that have Quimby funds. I've heard that Pennelli Park does have a very adjacent project that Quimby was the source for those improvement funds. I didn't hear the same without Montini and Olson. So I'm good question, where are those funds coming from? Which subdivision produced those funds? And is that enough nexus to the improvements of those other two existing parks? Very much appreciate Councilmember Lowe's comments about the need for parks in our underpark portions of the city. In P nine, the Depot Park widening of the bike path was suggested with the Community Service Environment Commission back in the, before that commission. And I don't see that in the current design, and I would hope that that's contemplated in the, uh, if not this phase of capital improvement in subsequent park redesign planning. And make sure that whatever you're spending your money on now doesn't include widening the bike path in that obviously congested area. Um, P ten, and my final bullet, is the plaza waste bins. I very much appreciate the redesign, uh, addition compost, I think implementation of S P thirteen eighty three, under the steady hand of our sustainability coordinator is makes it obvious why we we needed to blow the whistle and slow that project down, although we need bins and suddenly in the meantime, it was just yesterday. Um, we will at least not have spent the money on a system that had to be redesigned. So I appreciate staff's work and and all the effort that's gone into that. I did have a question around the total number of waste receptacles. Um, and the funding, if the funding has changed since it was originally proposed and moved in by the C S E C. So I hope those are substantive and and valuable comments. I appreciate your your reference.
Thank you, Tom. Any more comments, Patricia?
It frustrated me.
Okay.
Yes.
I was, I have a silly question, and I thought there was another park behind Sassery School.
There is Hertenstein Park.
No, that one's Hertenstein and.
Isn't that the one? Maybe I'm getting the wrong name.
Over.
Errolde Park?
Not Errolde, oh, maybe.
And I I tried to hold it up on my phone, the parks, but I know I know there was a park there. There is a park there.
Yeah, some David plants.
Yeah. Anyway, um, I'll ask that question later to my computer.
There there are some little spots over there, but it's not.
We figured.
It's not accessible to the population that I described.
Okay.
It.
Her Hertenstein is south of the Barker Street.
Right, that, yes.
This one is right behind Sassery.
Alright, so any any more comments? Oh, sorry. Patricia, have you finished here?
I have, thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Yes, any more comments? If not, yeah, we can keep going on for the transportation capital.
The Transportation Capital Improvement Program. The city's transportation network provides the connection between different land uses, like in homes and shopping, jobs and recreation. An efficient and integrated transportation system enables Sonoma residents to combine the benefits of small town living with job and recreational opportunities. The network includes facilities for pedestrians, bicycles, transit riders, and motorists. Fiscal year twenty one, twenty two accomplishments, uh, we will have completed the twenty twenty two City Slurry Seal project that hopefully you will let us award tonight. Uh, which involves street resurfacing of slurry seal fourteen streets and two pathways. Uh, we received the E seventy six for Friar Creek pedestrian and bicycle bridge project. Advertised and awarded construction and construction management contracts and began construction on the Friar Creek pedestrian and bicycle bridge. Completed the Broadway streetscape enhancement and traffic circulation project, completed restriping of Broadway to include bicycle lanes and enhanced pedestrian crossings. Uh, completed all but the construction phase of the Chase Street Bridge replacement project. Um, completed design of the new curb ramp for Second Street West and Napa Street. Initiated design and cost discussions were safe way for improvements on the Fifth Street West crossing of Studley Street. I'm gonna not read the two pages of goals because I think that we're gonna get into them in the projects.
Can I ask a question? Because I would challenge you that you have completed the enhanced pedestrian crossings on Broadway.
I figured that you would challenge.
Because it hasn't been completed, and I thought we had allocated money of this last fiscal year's budget. And we haven't moved ahead on that project, and I see it's it's proposed again, but, uh, I think that a lot of the comments I heard from from the public is, hey, it was good to do what we did so far, but where are those pedestrian crossings that are supposed to improve cro- uh, pedestrian safety? And I, I.
That particular item of enhancement, I was more referring to the markings, the green markings and such, but I recognize that we haven't done those pieces. Um, the budget that I have.
The street markings were there before.
Did people? I hear. Um, and the budget that I have for the Broadway project, not having been here at the time that it was passed, includes the the bike lanes and the then barricades. Um, but did push out the R F B blinkers into this fiscal year. Uh, so that's what we're requesting in this budget is to complete that work.
I know there was some negotiation with the state, and the state, I think, refused to put them in there, or they would have put in something else with the overheads like they'd done on West Napa.
Right. And I don't have all of the history of it, so I'm just piecing it together, what I know of, the budget that I'm seeing. But let me go through the projects, and we'll get to that one. It's the last one, and we can talk about kind of our plan to make that come to fruition. So Chase Street Bridge is our first project, um, which has been here for a while. So the city has received approvals from the Highway Bridge Program with grant funding in the amount of two million three hundred thousand dollars for replacement of the existing bridge. This is a federal grant administered by Caltrans, and the fund covers approximately eighty eight percent of the cost of engineering, right away phase and construction. Uh, the city completed the engineering and right away phases to date, and the project is shovel ready, and the city is anticipating that we'll get federal money in the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. Uh, we just had a meeting with Caltrans, and they're giving us like a ninety nine percent probability that we'll get funding. It's been programmed into next year's federal fiscal year. Um, so we're hoping to get our E seventy six for construction in the fall and advertise for construction or the contract to do the work um, in the spring and start, uh, work next summer in twenty twenty three.
Can I ask a question about this? I I know that this has been in the budget for years, and I know it's like structurally deficient. Um, and it's been shovel ready, I assume, for a while. What what is taking so long, especially when we have a bridge that conceivably could?
We lost the funding in twenty twenty, so they they promised us money then, too. We'd gone through the construction management bid, the R C phase, we were ready to go, and then they didn't allocate us the money. And but that was during the pandemic, and that's sure entirely why that happened, but it's a small bridge and it just got bounced. So with all of the new Biden infrastructure money, Caltrans is saying that we're definitely going to get the money this year. And so we're in the same place. We've just kind of been in a holding pattern with our shovel ready project, and it's one of those ones that is easily fundable under this kind of infrastructure bills because it is shovel ready.
But if we're allocating general fund dollars to it with the idea that eventually it will be reimbursed, I mean, couldn't we just move forward with it anyway? And if we don't get reimbursed, we're just spending our own money to retrofit a bridge that is could be dangerous?
We could. And if. Yeah, and and if they pull our funding again, we talked to Caltrans just in this meeting about what that path looks like.
Mm hmm.
Um, and you actually can get reimbursed faster than waiting for your first money to get programmed. So we'd like to move forward with it either way.
Okay, no, I I support that, moving forward.
But that's not the budget request that we've put here. So the budget request right now, the general fund dollars and, um.
This is Friar Creek?
No, this is Chase Street Bridge.
Chase.
Chase, Chase.
So because it sounded sort of funny, who, oh.
So you're asking for one point six million more?
This is, um, yes. No, we're not asking for one point six million more. I'm sorry. This is the money that would be reimbursed if we were to build it all upfront. Well, I guess that we could go either way. We could just spend it and then ask for reasonable reason to go back.
So you means, uh, you can reimburse with the within a Caltrans and the money originally from the fathom?
Yes.
Yeah, and two years ago, prior to the project being denied funding, uh, there was a, there was an effort done to update the plans and specs on the job. They went through, they got updated the current year, we got all ready to go, and the funding got pulled.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and so the the department has done some work on that, trying to get that job started. And thi- this is what we're doing now, is we're pulling the trigger. We talked to Caltrans within the last week.
Mm hmm.
And, um, you know, he said ninety nine point nine. Uh. I, that's a hundred to me, but, you know, what I what I asked him for personally was the assurance that because we went through this effort two years ago and got the project all up to speed and ready to go, and then our funding got pulled. That, you know, I would appreciate that any other bridge that's equal to us, we take priority.
Yeah. Yeah.
And he acquiesced and, you don't get necessarily an agreement, but you get
a nod.
a consensus.
And so do they evaluate based on the rating of the bridge? Meaning, were we denied because it's not as deficient as? Like, it could hold a few more years? I mean, again, this is not my area of expertise.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know why the project was denied funding. It was probably just, I I heard that there was problems with H B R at that time. They were just, uh, they were too much in the red.
Mm hmm.
And that's not the case now. There's the the coffers are full, and so that's probably why he said ninety nine point nine. And, um, you know, we're 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 moving forward with that. We're
Great.
getting the consultant done a contract to once again update the plans and specs, which isn't much of an update. It's the federal requirements of the front that change. All the different, uh, fed requirements shift probably every six to twelve months. And so when your project's two years old, you gotta update those to check all the boxes.
And I assume the longer it takes, the more expensive it gets.
Pricewise, sure. Yeah, and right now it's not cheap to build things. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great. That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Project T two, Friar Creek Pedestrian Bridge. The Friar Creek Pedestrian Bridge is a high priority project in the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The project was awarded a federal grant utilizing congestion mitigation air quality funds in the amount of five hundred and one thousand dollars. The contract was awarded for construction and is underway in fiscal year, uh, F, fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Uh, we're hoping for completion of the project in the fall, projected to be October. Um, and we have money in the twenty one, twenty two budget, um, for all that we need to complete the projects. We're asking for any additional funding in this budget. That, uh, O B A grant is the money that we're getting from Caltrans to pay for that. You have questions about that one?
I do, I do have, um, it's, uh, first of all, thank you so much. You visited Samir and Mary Ann, which I thought was wonderful, and I believe that you're their connection. And they also like the contractor who's working with them. I know the family, and, uh, it, this is big, you know, it's a big deal for for the people, those two homes. I don't know if I'd like to be in that situation, but I am so pleased that this is happening because it's a real connection between west and east, walkers, or bicyclists, whoever does that. They, we were, that project was in danger. I was on S C T A at the time, and I had to beg, not beg, they were wonderful. This whole county, every city agreed to fund this because we had missed the deadline to fund it. And I wanted to let you know, every city voted yes for Sonoma. It may not have been for me, it could have been for Logan, because he always left such a nice impression. But that money was in danger, and I'm so pleased that the city, the other cities voted for it, because that's why we're we're here right now. Thanks.
That's great.
Underway, they did their pot-holing this morning, so you can see a big pile of dirt there. Those dry dogs. Hey, project T three, our biennial slurry seal project. Uh, the purpose of the biennial slurry seal is to extend the service life of the streets and maintenance to good condition above a P C I of seventy. The project treatment includes slurry seal, crack seal, um, and is part of the road maintenance and rehabilitation account funded. Funding is received by the Senate Bill one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. Uh, we get an estimated two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, um, for this from that fund every year. Uh, we're just currently using the funding we got from nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one for the slurry seal that's going to kick off, um, in June. So for this next year, we're proposing to just, uh, put it into that fund and keep it. We have T four. Uh, the city sidewalk inspection and repair program to help ensure the city sidewalks are open and accessible to all persons. The city council adopted the sidewalk trip hazard repair policy in twenty thirteen. The policy was intended to use a multi-phased approach to minimize potential trip hazards caused by cracked and damaged sidewalks. And the policy's implementation program included eleven inspections and repair phases. The city's completed the phases one through eleven, and the city will continue with a maintenance phase as well as homeowner matching assistance. So under this, we're seeking sixty thousand dollars in general fund to, um, match homeowners who need to repair the the sidewalks in front of their houses, as well as evaluate either the P C C program that we've been doing to minimize trip hazards. Um, or potentially other things. Let me talk about that more, Mike.
Yeah, we're reevaluating the program. We've gone through eleven, we, uh, my understanding is we divided the neighborhood, uh, the city into eleven different sections, neighborhoods, and went through and evaluated conditions, did some repairs, and noticed some homeowners about the problems in front of their house and tried to encourage them to fix them. Um, it is state law to maintain the sidewalk adjacent to your property, uh, in front of your house, and what we're doing is we're reevaluating our program now that we've gone through the whole city and take a look at, I mean, these are typically uh, systemic problems due to tree roots, and that is a tricky situation when you're talking about the tree. So if the program's going to involve evaluation of trees, it's going to get a little bit more tricky versus just cutting. And if the if the displacement is small enough, we could just have a contractor cut it. So what we're looking at right now is a second round of that, which, like Oriana said, is hopefully going to involve, um, getting getting the homeowners to be a little bit more proactive in getting the fixes done. Maybe coming up with a list of contractors that could do the work for them to make it easier for them to go out and get a quote. And then, like Oriana said, we're going to do a cost match. I believe the previous cost match was up to a thousand dollars. Um, my previous experience, we've done more, and so we could look into doing that. And the way that I look at it as, if you end up with sixty, if you start with sixty thousand and you end up with fifty at the end of the year, your cost match wasn't high enough. We want to, we want to spend a hundred percent of that money and get as many people to go in as possible, and the way you do that is by having um, costs that are reflective of current construction cost, and if we have to reevaluate those, we will. And then also, um, getting the word out and just encouraging people and making it as easy as possible for them to be part of the program. And the last thing that we want to do is get a concrete crew and take this responsibility. If we can avoid doing that, that's the right way to go.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, because that involves, uh, it's an entire program. Yeah.
So it's, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
It's interesting because this issue is very sensitive to a lot of people. I guess you all know that. But some of these people that thought trees have ruined the sidewalks, they didn't want the trees, and the trees were forced on them. That's a history that's here. If you go to the house on York and I think Fourth Street East, she had to replace probably two hundred feet of the sidewalk, and she's, I I don't even know if she's still alive. And in front, and that was one of the things she said, we never wanted those trees when my husband was alive. So it's a pretty sensitive issue. And I know that this city is not liable for these things, uh, that there's a protection. You know, we would probably be begging in the streets if we had to fix them all, but I just wanted you to know that there's a history there, and maybe that's why people are not so, you know, proactive about doing this. And, um, and I know it needs to be done because obviously there's a liability that goes along with it. But that's some of the stories that that have come out, you know, when when we've been on the streets, walking and talking to people.
Also, I like your idea, you know, in the match program, if an and house owner, very cooperative, and and on the city, you need to support. Because I'm not sure legally it's allowed or not allowed. When I'm a visit and then, you know, find the street behind the high school, some the, you know, certain place, they already, you know, put a sign, the red flag or sign. So basically, this kind of sidewalk is not accessible, it's not open. And the kids, when the kids and were riding the bicycle, they 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 cannot go to that place. So now I just a concern about any accident that happened, and the city were got in a lawsuit or although I agree, you know, the these kind of issue in the sidewalk should be fixed by the homeowner, but a homeowner sometimes. But a homeowner, sometimes they have difficulties and financially and some homeowner, they just want to rely on the city. But we need to give them an education, you need to tell them what is the law and the, the bottom line is that we should tell them, you know, the, if some enforcement, we needed to, you, you have to, you know, fix. Otherwise, maybe we can take some of the action, you know, put in a lane on that in this way. Keep the, you know, that in the, you know, sidewalk and then move through. Otherwise, it's closed. The homeowner then puts in a, a red, small red flag around this place. That is, this is just like, um, Abraham Martin has said, it's a very sensitive issue. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Or now if the financially, if the weekend supporter do something or if, yeah, you mentioned a couple of thousand dollars, that is okay. But I think in the, you know, the sixty thousand, I, I don't know, you know, because and the major on the part is from the, I believe from the sales tax. And if the, out in the sale or gas tax, I'm not sure how to, and proportionally we can gather this and, and the gas tax, because right now the gas, you know, price increased a lot. I wonder this kind of the money could be increased proportionally as the gas price increased.
Yeah, and my understanding is that this program hasn't really been support, well, not supported. We've supported it, but hasn't been pushed outright, hasn't been understood and hasn't been utilized. And my goal is to spend the sixty thousand. Yeah, and if, if we don't do that, then we have one problem. If we do do that, then we have another problem, we need to find more money. And so, but right now I'm focused on spending that sixty thousand and, um, and then go to step two after that. Yeah, because if we can't get people to participate in the program, that's a, that's a problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think giving the list of contractors would be really helpful. Because people just don't know where to start, you know?
For sure, and we could have a, um, we could have a section on the website that walks them through a sidewalk cost share program. Yeah, and makes it step by step.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna copy that from Napa.
Yeah. Perfect.
That's good.
Always like when we steal things from Napa.
I don't like to reinvent any wheels and I help make it anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, one, one thing is that with the trees, I mean, um, many, many years ago, I saved a lot of trees in my neighborhood when they, the city wanted to take them all out because of the sidewalks. So, um, just as many peo- probably more people, I would say, are in favor of keeping trees rather than complaining about them. And in fact, um, I think it's really important to have trees and to create shade and lower energy costs, not to mention just the overall, you know, just decide which are the prettiest parts of the city and I guarantee you, you'll find a lot of trees in that place. So, um, you know, I just really hope that we also continue to support, um, trees in, in our community and figure out ways to, to live with the ones that are more invasive, like the ones I have in front of my house. Happy to repair whatever sidewalk is necessary to keep my trees. Uh, and I think my neighbors feel, most of them feel the same way. Um, I'm, I'm curious about, um, is it a law that we must have sidewalks?
I don't believe so.
I know there's some accessibility issues perhaps that go along with sidewalks.
Yeah, and I mean, it is typical, but if it was a law, then I don't think we could have the little orphan sections.
Yeah.
Yeah, or areas that are unimproved, which, you know, exist.
So I guess I'm asking the question, um, if somebody wanted to remove the sidewalk in front of their home, would they be allowed to do so?
It's come up before and there are strings attached with that in terms of removing it. Um, it is an ADA path, path of travel.
Right.
And adding those is never a problem, taking them away can't be. And it came up, it, it's come up a couple of times in my career and I haven't done it. But it has come up and there's always been strings attached with trying to remove the sidewalk. And, you know, creative thinking, there's a lot of different things that you can do to, um, get a tree root issue to be a non-issue.
Not plant the wrong tree in the beginning.
Once the tree's planted, you know, you're stuck with it. But, um, there are different things that you could do to look at, at, at tree experts and whether or not the, removing the root that's affecting the issue is, is doable. Because if it is, you can go in, you can either shave the root or remove the root, have an arborist polish it and then report the sidewalk.
Right. And you can also curve the sidewalks as well.
Ballouts, both out into the street and lose parking. And if we have enough right of way, you could do a bulb out, um, on a private tree, out into the planter strip or, um, if there's enough right of way behind back a walk, but typically there isn't.
Could you also give easement to the city and extend the sidewalk perhaps like into your property more? That would be flatter and allow for greater green space nearer the street. Is that something you've ever seen?
Not typically. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just looking at every single kind of option.
Most definitely.
I, the trees to me are very important.
Yeah, and we're gonna have to start doing those evaluations. Yeah, as part of this next phase of the program. Yeah.
Well, I, I like the way, the direction you're going. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off Council member Lowe, and I know you've brought this up before and I don't know if this is the right place to bring it up, but I think it would be nice to start talking about maybe a, um, and this relates to sidewalks and trees. I think trees are very important for like the climate and shaded, you know, encourage pedestrian travel and everything. And we've talked before about, just in the sort of initial phases about sort of like a West Napa Street beautification project, you know, Broadway is full of trees, et cetera. But once you start about, you know, the marketplace west, there aren't many trees on.
Even before that, even if First Street, uh, asked to.
Yeah, there's just not many trees on West Napa Street and, or, you know, I know it's a state highway, but, um, you know, in terms of long-term capital improvements, I do wanna start talking about that. So perhaps maybe not in this budget, but.
Well, especially when you put these beautiful benches there and you put a tree next to them. The people not only will be able to walk, they'll be able to sit in the shade. So that's, that's nice. And I know that at least, I mean, in San Francisco, I'm not comparing the two cities, but the, um, you know, they put these sort of little, little park, little green spaces. And it, they're, they're really nice, you know, they're native plants and so forth. Don't really take care of water and, um, you, you know, it beautifies streets that are otherwise just cement. Thank you for bringing that up.
Time, time is best.
So, um, I'm gonna, um, just suggest something. We're running out of time again, which is, I mean. And we haven't gotten to the other funds. Um, and then there was, so I'm gonna throw this out there. You think this is an awful idea? Could we do one more buddy, budget study session, um, to just finish this up and then talk about the changes that, that, or the, some of the things, the questions you had about the general fund? And what I'm thinking is, um, Monday, the twenty-third, we're all free. Um, or the twenties, the twenty-fourth, which, um, morning, we, it would have to be in the morning um, cuz we're having our barbecue at day. Um, so, uh, if you check your calendars, if we get any time on the twenty-third works for us.
I can't do the twenty-third unfortunately, I'm sorry.
I can't do the twenty-fourth.
Okay, yeah, cuz then we're running out to time, so.
No, I can't. Everything is, starts at eight-thirty and ends at four for me.
Oh, I know the twenty-third is at, um, all day thing, yeah, I know. Okay.
We don't have a closed session. Oh, but we need another, more time, I guess, to prepare. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, bec- well, it's, like, we're still hoping for the first. To get this done. Uh, we could do it on the fifteenth, um, but, uh, we could do an evening as well.
What day you're suggesting?
Um, well, I'm gonna throw it out there. Um, next week, I really, um, any evening works for me.
The Wednesday is the twenty-fifth. Let's see.
I, yeah, I have nothing.
I can do that.
I could do that.
I can do that.
Um, and we could start, I mean, you know, later in the day if you wanted, um, like a four or.
Yeah, yeah, I have something from one to five.
Okay, so we could.
I've got a citizens, uh, Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission meeting that night.
That night.
Oh.
We're talking about the latest track to.
I don't have anything on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's cutting it too close, so we would have, we might as well just push it to the first day.
I know we've had a lot, this is taking a lot of time, but honestly, this has been a great discussion and I hope, I hope everybody finds it worthwhile because there's no other time for us to throw these ideas out. And, and so thank you for trying to schedule more time because I think it's really important.
And it's for the benefit of new, our new, new people to know what has happened here.
Sure.
And the budget really is the most important thing we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, we'll just plan on the first being another somewhat study session on the budget.
When? I'm sorry, you said some?
Well, it'll.
You have to decide.
Yeah, we'll do it first. I mean, really, we, by pushing it to the end of the week, we wouldn't have time to make any changes till the first day. You know, to be ready for the agenda. We'd have to have the agenda ready on Friday, so we wouldn't make it for the first day.
So we wanted to approve it on the first, but we have until the.
You have until the end of the month.
Yeah.
But, um, really the fifteenth is, is kind of the day.
The last day, yeah.
We'll do it.
Yeah, so.
Have faith.
Yeah. That's fine.
That's good. So the, we are sure to not continue, you know, at least the finish.
Okay, yeah.
We're gonna take a break or not?
Yeah, have a break first and then we, because right now is four o'clock. We can have the one hour, an half hour or?
No, oh, no, I was just, I just thought we were having a, just a five-minute break or something.
Yeah, I think we could at least get through the CIP budget, um, okay? And then, um, then we.
And then next time we find a adjustment, yeah.
I brought up a closed session cuz I thought that was, is that canceled?
Yes, it is, yes, yes.
So we could conceivably go till five-thirty today, right?
We could, you know, it's up to you.
Yeah, I think we should go till five-thirty, just take a.
Five.
I'm just saying a five-minute break, just.
Yeah, okay, that sounds fine to me, that works for me.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that is a good decision, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, five minutes.
These are just our maintenance funds, so I'll pull through these and then I know we're gonna talk about T ten. So T, uh, five is our ongoing payment rehabilitation, um, replacement project. Uh, the city's payment rebuilds, rehabilitation portion of the projects will involve milling and resurfacing of the existing pavement to mitigate against the effects of dreading, cracking and other distresses and will include at a minimum accessibility upgrades to pedestrian ramps, crosswalks, signage and pavement markings. Uh, the project, uh, when needed, will include water service replacements. Uh, the ongoing projects, uh, are expected to utilize a combination of funding sources for transportation, including transportation measure M, sales tax, gas taxes and city general funds. Just question, four thousand dollars to do our favorite rehabilitation projects. And then T six, the citywide road safety improvement projects, uh, is implementation of our SSAR, uh, to include infrastructure improvements. Uh, over the next couple of years, city staff is pla- planning to continue the medium-term projects, including implementing class-two bike lanes, reconstructing intersections and implementing enhanced crosswalks, uh, identified in the SSAR. Um, from that document, the SSAR, the main project that we're gonna look to move forward is the intersection of West Studley and, Studley and West Fifth Street. Where using carryover funding from the previous fiscal year to do that. And then T ten, the Broadway pedestrian safety project. So for this in twenty-two, twenty-three, the project is proposing to continue, uh, the striping that was done in this fiscal year, uh, including continued visible enhanced pedestrian crossings to include pedestrian safety and markings, um, in rapid flashing beacons at Hatton, France and Andricks, Malay and Clay Street. Um, and we are looking for additional money out of the general fund to do that. The new director is putting together some pricing, we think we can do it with staff in-house. What was the quote this morning? It was fifteen thousand dollars in parts, not including our internal labor. Uh, our plan forward to make the rapid flashing beacons on Broadway that I know is an expectation is to do one of those off of Broadway to kind of, um, test our crews and our implementation of the, the equipment that we picked out. Um, make sure we get all the ADA pieces correctly done and then work through the Broadway pieces one by one. Um, need getting permission permits for those, um, so hoping to do that in the fiscal year.
In, in our CIP budget last year, we allocated two hundred and thirty-two K for that. And it's not in the carryover, is it a hundred and twenty in addition to the two thirty-two?
Yeah, the two thirty-two we used in the striping and project, but we had to repay, redo the striping engineering pieces and for the beaker, the K seventy-one.
So we allocated two thirty-two for beacons.
That was the whole project. Right, so, so that was the, the striping and the bike lane and, uh, I don't have beacons.
We were, we were told, we were told that the state was paying for all that and we only had to pay for like forty thousand more. That's literally what we were told, so I was.
I do, I do, I do recall that too, I, yeah, yeah.
And I allocated, well, the council, but me personally voted for two hundred and thirty-two K for beacons.
Got it.
And I, that, I do remember, when you said that, I just, yeah, I was.
Yeah, I do too, cuz I said it right there, yeah.
Huh.
And also, maybe we can pay first and then later on we can get a reimbursement or.
I don't think that Caltrans is gonna pay that upon the discussions that we've had.
No, Caltrans was never paying.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Me and you, we were paying for the two hundred and thirty-two.
Yeah.
But they were paying for everything else, and so where did the two thirty-two go?
I'm sorry.
Where did the two thirty-two go? Well, I would just love to.
Well, I, that was for the striping and the, um, right? And you, and I do, I, I should have.
No, they were paying for the striping and we were doing like forty thousand additional.
Yes.
Yeah, and we need to find out, and we can do.
Sue, let's do it.
Yeah, that is.
We all agree, but, um, so we can, Mike, we'll, we'll look into that, right? Because that was, it was Caltrans was, that's where, and that was just gonna be additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, it took, maybe we can ask for reimbursement.
Yeah.
Because it's their street, totally.
Yeah.
But the real bottom line is can we fast-track this and get it early in, in the fiscal year? Rather than coming, coming back to next May saying, well, we're almost there and we're waiting for the encroachment permit.
This is gonna be a new operation for our crew and I'm confident that our crews can, well, I have, I have a confidence level that our crews can do it because my crews did it over in Napa. And I wanna get one underneath my belt though. And like I, like Oriana informed council, we have, uh, you know, we got a cut sheet today. I talked to the vendor and we're gonna get a PO cut and we're going to order the parts and pieces and go to an easy location and practice. And then the whole time that that's happening, we're gonna be working with Caltrans to get, hopefully a fast-tracked encroachment permit to work in there because we, our crews have been out there working. And, um, get all the ducks in a row for, you know, what, what I would envision is I could see our crews doing one of these every month or two. And there's seven of them that have to be done, four on Broadway and four off Broadway. And so you're talking about finishing all, all of them within a year. And the, the ones on Broadway are gonna be the priority. That's the ones that people want to see. And so we will focus on those. I just don't wanna go out there and practice our first one on Broadway.
When you say there are others off Broadway, what are, what are you talking about? I thought we only have four on Broadway.
There are four on Broadway and three off Broadway. Uh, Fifth and Bike Trail, Fifth West and Bike Trail, um, is there one at Studley?
Potentially, if we.
And one at Presswood.
So that's great, I didn't know that was part of it. I thought this was just for Broadway.
No, this is for all seven of them. Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that.
Way I have it first out there is only for the Broadway ones, but we have the other ones, you know.
But keep in mind, we actually removed, uh, enhancements off of a couple of crosswalks on Broadway, which have, you know, so now you just have the painted crosswalk.
Right.
So we've not, we're not only, uh, not enhanced pedestrian safety, we've backed, we've gone in reverse.
Yep.
So it's important for us to try to get it in as fast as we can.
Right. And on Studley, um, the problem is, I, I, I don't know what you can do to make that crosswalk safe, quite honestly. And the, the reason I'm saying this is that the left turn backs up and it blocks, it blocks the view. So the cars that are proceeding to cross Napa are, cannot see if there is a pedestrian in the crosswalk. And, um, luckily not recently, but two people have been killed in that crosswalk historically. Um, and the reason is, is you just, you can't see if anybody is there. And so, um, you know, what I. And so, um, you know, what I tell everybody is go up to the corner and cross there where it's safe. Like, you know, as I said, I live in that neighborhood and, um, that's kind of, you know, I, I cross over there, I go to Safeway, you know, Sonoma Market, et cetera. And I would never cross at Studley and yet there are a lot of, um, retirement communities on Studley and out that way and that is their closest way to go, to travel, to get into Safeway's parking lot.
In wheelchairs.
In wheelchairs, many of, in wheelchairs. And, you know, I, I'm glad you're paying attention to that intersection, but because of the backup of the cars, the, the sightlines are just not there. You do not know if someone is in the crosswalk. And people just say, oh, there's cars, oh, I see a green light up there and they go forward. And I see it all the time. Um, so I, I'd love to see what you're gonna do, but honestly, if that crosswalk was removed and it was, people were told, don't cross here, go up to the signal, it would be, it would be safer. So.
Would, would it, would it make sense, and again, we're not the traffic engineers here, but would it make sense to remove it and put it down at like Oregon?
No, like, no. I, I don't know, I just, it's so, it, it's just so bad. I, I wish that, um, Chief Rodriguez was here to, to sort of get his sense of it as well. Um, i- if, you cannot see if someone's in the crosswalk and if they're in a wheelchair, you absolutely can't see because they're, you know, below the sightlines.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I just think it's a very unsafe place to cross.
Well, and that's one of the beauties of these enhancements is that it's up six feet and it's a, a real bright fro- flashing light.
Right, yeah, the one on, on, uh, is it Seventh Street West in Napa that, that has the light, the new ones up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's the, the.
The home to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be like that?
Yeah.
Like at St. Francis?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, well, that's the same one as St. Francis.
West. Yeah, there is one in St. Francis.
Yeah.
Yeah, be, no, it will not be like that. Yeah, those are, that's a traffic master.
Yeah.
But no, there's a, I mean, there's a picture of it right here on page twenty-nine.
It's just gonna be on the sides.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's got the flashing amber lights. And they're very visible. They're very visible.
It's much better than when they were in the pavement.
Yeah, the pavement ones, I, I, my, my understanding is those didn't work too well intermittently.
Well, sometimes, and sometimes some light, you just didn't see them.
Yeah, and so, um, but with these, with these, uh, flashing beacons, they are very noticeable. Yeah, and they're all over, over in Napa. We're putting them in like crazy, council loves them, the, the public loves them, yeah, and they just want more.
Okay.
School zones, high crossing zones, and you know, they're, I, Oriana, have we done studies on Studley? Have we had traffic engineers look at that or is that on the agenda?
Yeah, that's what's in our SSAR.
Okay, yeah, so it, there may be a couple of other enhancements that we can do there. But, um, you know, as soon as we put one of these out, we'll let everybody know where it is. And you can all go out and take a look at it and, um, and they, they are around, yeah, and they're very visible.
The safest time to cross Fifth Street West is during the school day with the crossing guards from Sasserini Elementary School.
Hmm.
And it, we really owe a debt of gratitude to them because they provide the safest crossing of that street. And I can't tell you how many people run the stop sign, there was one today on Fifth Street West and Andrex Street. They run it all the time. I see the, the police sitting there from time to time trying to catch people. Of course, when they sit there, they're not there, but when I see them, they're there. And I, my neighbor across the street from me has been hit twice on that intersection. And it, it's, you know, Fifth Street West is very dangerous. Um, you know, I think we need those enhancements at Andrex and Fifth Street West as well, even though there's a four-way stop. People, they don't see it, they're looking ahead to the stoplight down the road.
Yeah.
And it, um, I just, I cross it all the time and it's absolut-, it's scary. How many, how many cars go past through those things?
Something we're gonna be looking into over this next fiscal year are traffic calming measures.
Yeah.
This is becoming a, a big thing and, um,
Yes.
We'll be doing some, going to some seminars, letting, you know, hearing what the experts have to say, yeah.
Thank you, but thank you for paying attention to Fifth Street West because it's very dangerous.
I'm done with transportation, I'm gonna pass it off to the operator.
All right, so just a quick overview of the Water Utility Capital Improvement Program for the next fiscal year. Um, I'll just preface this by saying that the Sonoma community relies on the city to deliver high quality and dependable water. Uh, the Water Utility Capital Improvement Program undertakes major projects that renew, replace, or augment the water system infrastructure. This infrastructure includes three city-owned tanks with a combined storage capacity of five and a half million gallons, seven production wells, and a pertinent treatment facilities, two pump stations, fifty-six miles of water main ranging from eight inches to fourteen inches in diameter, five hundred and thirteen fire hydrants, and approximately four, forty-five hundred service connections. Typical capital improvement projects include replacing aging water mains and appurtenances, uh, neighborhood scale water service replacement projects, uh, renewing tank coatings and corrosion control systems, replacing well or pump station equipment, replacing supervisory control and data acquisition systems and equipment, and cycle building improvements for well and pump station buildings. Some of the accomplishments in the capital improvement program for the current fiscal year included improving the resiliency of the city's water distribution system, um, and increased fire protection through completion of capital improvement projects W six and W seven, those are fire flow improvements. We also replaced all cast iron water valve boxes, frames, and covers along the State Route twelve alignment in coordination with Caltrans through the completion of capital improvement project W twelve. And we completed engineering and design of capital improvement project W thirteen, the well number one vault cover and air exchange project. So looking forward, our requested capital improvement budget for the next fiscal year features, um, rollover, but no additional planned expenditures for Water System Condition Data Project Number W two. This is a, a system-wide asset management and condition assessment, um, that has been queued up for some time, um, but laying some of the foundational work, um, is required to really mobilize experts on it. For example, you know, uh, putting together all of our as-built safety drawings for all of the water system infrastructure, is just something that's, that's moving forward. Uh, we wanna keep the funding available, um, and, but we aren't anticipating uh, any expenses related to this project in, uh, the next fiscal year. W eight, this is an urban water management, uh, sorry, urban water management plan and minor water master plan update. Um, so the urban water management plan is a, a plan that we're required to produce, uh, every five years. Um, and it, it, it's our way of looking at, uh, both the forecast supply availability and the forecast demand and making sure that they are well in alignment so that we don't have a, a supply shortage. And then the water master plan is our, our long-term plan for assessing the actual capital infrastructure, um, for its reliability and recommending cost-effective improvements to it. And we don't have any requested funding ads for the next fiscal year. Um, so this table just earmarks, uh, where we anticipate making significant funding requests um, based on that five-year report update cycle. Project W ten, water meter system upgrades. City currently uses, uh, an advanced, uh, meter reading system, um, that uses a truck mounted radio read um, to, to drive around and collect, uh, information about the consumption data on every meter on a monthly basis. The state of the art for this is called Advanced Metering Infrastructure, um, and provides real-time, uh, data about water consumption and, and flag for water customers, water leaks, uh, or, or excess consumption, uh, when it's happening. Provide a little bit more water conservation. This one is a pretty big lift, it's, it's a huge, huge undertaking to swap out the water meters on all forty-five hundred service connections and stand up the radio reading infrastructure um, to support that, that information gathering and reporting. Um, so we're not, we don't foresee that we can mobilize, mobilize that capital infrastructure project in this, uh, next fiscal year, but we are, are flagging it in this document, um, as an anticipated request in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Chris, you have, uh, a, a device on some of the water meters that actually is electronic and you say it still require a meter reader to go by and, and swipe it with a device, but I don't think they have to open the box anymore.
They don't have to open the box anymore, there's a, there's a radio transmitter, um, that's connected to the register um, and it has a little circular disc in the top of the box and you only have to drive by it.
Okay, so, but this is a, a further enhancement, is it from that system?
No more driving by and, and this would support, um, customers would be able to log into a portal and, and see their consumption at any point during the cycle rather than waiting till the end of the month to get their bill. Um, so if they, they could, one of the, one of the utilities of this is, is that you could set notifications cus-, or tailored to the customer, uh, for their preferences so that if they had a leak or high consumption, they could perceive a notice, um, when it's happening. Uh, so, yeah, that's, that's AMI.
And our water rates have built in these projected?
Not this one, um, this was, this was outside of the projections, but we do have built into their water, um, fund a consultant for, um, a new water rate study because this is the, the last year for our water rate, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So CIP number W thirteen, um, this one is, is high priority for me. This is our, our well one, um, it's the oldest and highest producing drinking water production well owned and operated by the city of Sonoma. Um, city maintenance workers need to enter, so the wellhead is below Second Street East. It's, it's not in a building, um, and to access it, you have to lift a, a non-standard, extra-large, uh, cast iron manhole cover, um, to do any work on the well. And, uh, and during times of drought where we're reducing or draw up the aqueduct, uh, that can be, uh, every three or four days. So, uh, CIP W thirteen will remove that, um, that cover and replace it with, uh, much more modern five-foot by five-foot, uh, double-axis, uh, vault lid that's rated for traffic and, uh, and will also include some other improvements to the vault to improve its atmospheric conditions, um, and replace the disinfection equipment in the well. Uh, CIP W fourteen, Norvong Tank Coating Renewal. So the Norvong Road Water Tank, um, guarantees that, uh, all of the water is available to meet both average and peak water demands, uh, for the city's customers as well as providing adequate reserve for firefighting activities. The three million gallon tank, three million gallon storage tank was completed in two thousand and two and the exterior coating is approaching the end of its useful life. Uh, so to protect and extend the useful life of the tank itself, uh, we're requesting, uh, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars next fiscal year to replace that exterior coating. W fifteen, uh, well number three, water disinfection equipment replacement. Uh, well three is another one of the, the city's key pieces of, uh, water production infrastructure uh, and guarantees our, uh, local resiliency, uh, in, in the event of a, a natural disaster or significant drought that affected our aqueduct deliveries. The disinfection equipment at the well has reached the end of its useful life. And we're requesting forty-five thousand dollars next fiscal year to replace it. And the last one is W sixteen, Global Valley Road and Thornsberry Water Valve Off Frame Cover, Frame and Cover Replacement. Much like the, um, recently completed project to replace all of our valve, um, we call them valve cans in the State Route twelve alignment, um, we'll coordinate this with the County of Sonoma which will be repaving portions of, um, Global Valley Road, uh, and Thornsberry Road that intersect with our underground water utility out there and will replace our cans, uh, through a joint contract where we'll leverage their, their contractors to do the work for us. That wraps up, uh, the next fiscal year's Water Utility Capital Improvement Budget Request.
On sixty-eight, on page sixty-eight, um, we'll go right to the water fund, um, budget.
Okay. Okay, so. So on the operational side, um, the water utility, um, operates the infrastructure that I've, I've just discussed. Regular operational activities include, uh, ensuring that the city delivers drinking water that meets or exceeds all, all EPA drinking water standards through diligent adherence to state-approved, a state-approved schedule of water sampling and laboratory analysis, monitoring and adjusting water tank levels, pumping schedules, and pressure-reducing station parameters to maintain system pressure across three pressure zones at higher and lower elevations. Ensuring that the city's drinking water cannot become contaminated through administration of a robust backflow prevention and cross-connection control program. Protecting property and conserving water by promptly repairing system leaks, uh, for example, water main breaks and damage, uh, for example, vehicle collisions with fire hydrants. Operating groundwater wells and protecting public health through implementation of industry-standard disinfection and treatment methods. Precisely measuring and maintaining accurate records of water production and delivery using four thousand, forty-five hundred water meters spread each month. Uh, providing customer service related to water bills and water quality inquiries, promoting water conservation through public information and outreach campaigns, administration of a rebate, rebate and incentive programs, and advanced water supply and resiliency planning, uh, responding to eight-one-one underground service alert requests from the excavation community to prevent dig-ins and damage to the city's infrastructure during excavation. Outside of these day-to-day operations, some of our, uh, special accomplishments or, or notable challenges that were overcome during the fiscal year we're currently in, including contracting, uh, for a hi- highly qualified interim water supervisor to supervise operation of our water system. We completed America's Water Infrastructure Act emergency response planning. Uh, we responded to grand jury reports, uh, two of them, one called the situation is worsening and the other called water for a change in the future. We commissioned and trained staff in response to these, uh, to operate an emergency system intertied between the city of Sonoma and Valley River Water District. We completed motor and pump overhauls on pumps one and two at the Norvong Pump Station. We completed vault improvements and transitioned to, uh, uh, photovoltaic loads at our, uh, pressure zone one-two intertie facility. We improved security at key facilities through improved fencing and remote surveillance. Uh, we improved resiliency to staff shortages by completing emergency service contracts with Nazar and Water Utilities and private contractors. And we updated key supervisory control and data acquisition hardware and software components to support multi-operator remote notification, operation, and collaborative tre- troubleshooting of system parameters. Some of our operational goals for the next fiscal year include recruiting and onboarding a high, highly water-qualified team of water system operators and continuing to develop capable and dedicated workforce to safeguard the city's drinking water. Continuing to respond to severe drought, including implementation of water shortage contingency plan, enforcement of. Enforcement of mandatory water use restrictions. Increased water production from city wells and continued water conservation community partnership activities. Expanded use of the city's computerized maintenance management system. Continued continues continued staff support to the Sonoma Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency and Sonoma County Water Agency. Contractors Technical Advisory Committee. And improve sys- system asset inventories and predictive maintenance schedules to improve equipment reliability and reduce repair costs. And that is. The only, oh, I'll just flag there is a special operational increase for the cost of retail. Pardon me, wholesale water purchases off of the aqueducts. Would we like to continue with any of the other?
Cemetery.
Funds? We will on cemetery.
One thing I did want to mention is that we did not include the rep- reserves for the water utility. We do have sufficient reserves, we are reserving for operational. Just as we have in the in general fund and then we also have a rate stabilization reserve. But we, there was, we had to get the volumetric revenue and we couldn't get it quickly. So we're, but that will be in the final for the reserves, so.
Um, I know this is discussed from time to time, but has there been any sort of recent discussions about? I don't know what the right term is, but merging the Valley of the Moon Water District and our city of Sonoma Water Utility?
There have not been discussions, I mean, it's been, you know, there are thoughts of that. Is it a, would it be, and that's kind of part of the.
I'm sure there are a lot of pros and cons associated with that, especially as it relates to the city budget. But, you know, we have, obviously, we have to contract with Valley of the Moon from time to time. You know, this is becoming a very technical, you know, with state requirements with water, like, like, you know. And I'm sure there are a lot of inefficiencies having our own water department and the entire valley has its own water department. I just would like to maybe explore that.
Yeah, and then in MSR to the municipal services review that.
They recommend that, right?
Yeah, so they did recommend, you know, at least studying that. There's, you know, there's a lot involved with actually, you know, going to another utility and, you know, but it's. Yeah, I mean, if it, economy of scale and efficiencies and things, so that's down the road. So, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, I think the the conversation is out there, so then we will be.
What is the current use of water recommendation to people in Sonoma?
We have a recommendation. A like a gallons per household per day recommendation?
Yeah, that was a reduction more, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so we're at stage two in our water shortage contingency plan. That doesn't have an actual recommendation for achieving a specific reduction on a per household basis. But we have successfully reduced our water consumption off the aqueduct by twenty percent. And some of the ways that our customers have reduced water is through, one of them's come up recently, not not refilling new swimming pools. And reducing turf irrigation. We've done drought drive-ups to provide low-flow showerheads and and information for folks. We've got a turf rebate program. So if you have a irrigated turf lawn, you can, I think you can receive up to a thousand dollars on a per square foot of lawn removed. Basis. Am I forgetting? I think I got it, okay.
We're meeting your twenty percent requirement?
We're meeting our twenty percent reduction requirement on the public aqueduct.
So the ca- cash for grass is what you, I think you hinted at? And what is that per square, is it square foot or yard?
It's a dollar per square foot, but it has a maximum of one thousand dollars.
Maximum.
Maximum.
And how do how do how do people go about availing themselves of that?
So we have a turf rebate program application form. It's it's not, it's not luxurious to complete. And we have a very dedicated staff member. That focuses specifically on administering water conservation programs. And he'll actually confirm that it was irrigated turf that was removed. And verify that the replacement is consistent with water conservation and and not another. Another landscape feature that doesn't actually reduce water consumption. And then you'll get a check.
Do you have to remove the irrigation or just the grass?
You have to cap and abandon sprinkler heads, but you don't have to remove any irrigation components that are below grade, not serving the area removed.
So where is the money for, from for this? Is it funded by some, or it's us, or?
So this is funded through the Water Enterprise Fund. So it's it's funded through water revenues. And there is a water conservation budget within the water fund on an annual basis.
Has there ever been any consideration of raising that from a dollar, or it's?
Yeah, so we, I I actually just requested that we do a comparison of the turf rebate program rates from our neighboring water retailers. And we found that we were right on the mark. Everyone's paying about a dollar a square foot. There are two retailers that I think are moving up to a dollar fifty a square foot. But in my perception of the actual utilization of the program is that increasing the rate doesn't necessarily drive more demand for the program.
It's kind of interesting, different have different style houses. And when you read, not our house, but you have to have a beachy-looking house to do this stuff to your front area. So it would be nice, because I think the ecology center has actually offered, you know, different ideas about how to. Do the front, your front lawn, because our house is not beachy. And that's all that's offered, or beachy things with palms and, you know, whatever. So it would be nice if maybe extended through that program or maybe, I don't know, maybe some kind of a. Something where they make a presentation, because it's very difficult to 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 the front if you don't have a beachy house.
So so we actually had a presentation, yeah. Actually, Sarah Tracy is really starting to work with on the drought and, you know, having more, a lot more. Web, you know, information out there, because, I mean, I'm sure this, eventually the states were, they were gonna have more restrictions. So they're already starting to work on that, so that, and, yeah.
Is there any chance of increasing the maximum from thousands or something else?
I think that might actually increase program utilization.
Yeah, because it gives people incentive to pull out more lawn.
I think in front of the community center, at least a while back when it was installed, it's like a demonstration garden for drought tolerant. So people, maybe we should remind people, if they want ideas.
Yeah, I think some examples would be, would be fun.
Yeah.
You know, just so people who don't live in, I don't know what a beachy house is, but.
Yeah, can you define it, okay?
So, I know, but it would be, you know, just some examples of different architecture with varying things.
That might be, yeah, that may be something that, you know, you could get on a website and say, just examples of what you can replace your lawn with, yeah.
I mean, if people have a visualization of it, then they they go, oh, yeah, no, that's, I can do that, you know? But it's just sometimes.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, our messages, we're gonna get those messages out there more about the drought, because we are gonna go to more restrictions for sure. So Sarah is is working.
Because I think Napa actually, not Napa, Marin County, actually has more samples of the yards, not the beachy ones. But just different, you know. You know what I'm talking about, um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, palms and stuff, that's not.
That's a great idea.
Now, some are faux colonials, that's not beachy, so.
Do they call those faux colonials?
I like, I like that.
That's having all of these conversations pretty regularly right now. And we're definitely looking at involving the public and also the landscaping professional community. Because they make a lot of the recommendations to their clients to make changes, so those are those are pathways that we're exploring.
Yeah.
Thank you for asking any questions, Bob.
If we finish this topic, I'll, I have questions related to our groundwater. And because of the Sonoma Valley and then we have the sustainability with the groundwater agency. We are working on the fees. We're getting the feedback from our local and the former city, you know, users. How many wells we have?
Not very many. So a a significant portion of the city is outside of the jurisdictional groundwater sub-basin. Including all except one of our municipal production wells. So we haven't received a lot of feedback from city residents. But the the lion's share of city residents are connected to our city water system. Very few, very few wells within city limits that are used by private well, well owners and operators.
How about to those residents around the, on the, a city and then district limit? They applying for, on the city, the water service or?
So some of the developed, mostly the developed portions of the valley that are to the cities north and west. Are served by Valley of the Moon Water District. The city's water system extends to a couple of rural residential areas directly to our east. There's about a hundred and thirty service connections out there. And there is a moratorium on new service connections. But we we do have an exemption policy for specific scenarios. I believe we've completed one this past year. It was a single-family residence located outside of the city, but along the alignment of an existing city water main. Small lot, no development potential for more units. And they submitted an engineering report demonstrating that their their onsite well had failed. And they were granted permission to connect to the city's water system. They're willing to look at that connection now. The CLAFCO, the Local Agency for Maintenance Commission, has a lot of, a lot of say in those conversations.
Yeah, thank you. And also I saw that we have challenges and the limited staff and resources. What that mean, we cannot find a qualified and a technician or expert, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a notable shortage sector-wide in water. And some of that is 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 really outside of the city's ability to 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 control. But we we've done our best and we've made diligent, good faith efforts to conduct several recruitments. And have not received applicants that met the minimum qualifications to complete the job.
Wow, that is. Are we not, or is our salary schedule too low?
We did.
Because donor water technicians also do other things within public works.
Yes, yes, they do, and through negotiations this year, we might be talking about like certificate.
Right. Yeah, dividing.
Well, because they're needed, I mean, we can't, we can't just have water operators and, you know, maintenance people and streets maintenance. Because, you know, many times they're called to be all hands and so, but there, there is the thought that we could provide certificate pay. So that that the people who have the water certs can, you know, have a little bit higher salary because they have a larger certification. So that's some, that's a way we could do it, because we're just too small to have just water people can.
Right, but that's, from what I understand, that's sort of the issue, that neighboring districts are paying a lot more. And so we're not getting applicants because we're paying too low, but then we end up doing these consultants or these contractors.
Right.
That are much more than if we just bumped the salary a little.
Right, and so we did look at the water supervisor, a number, I I think in two thousand nineteen, twenty. Compared to cities, we're not low. If you compare it to a water district, because remember, a water district can raise the rates pretty easily, whereas cities have a.
Right, because no one pays attention.
Right, well, and they just raise their rates and then they just, yeah. So, so, yeah, it's hard to compete against water districts. That's always been the problem, it's like you'll train people and then go to the water district because they can make more money.
Right, that's a good point.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, that's, that's always been a problem for city water operators, so.
If there, if there are certification within the department, is, would that be an incentive for people to stick around? Or you think once they're certified, it's like, I'm going to the big town or something?
It's, it's hard, that's a, a hard question, but I do think we provide an incentive for them to get their certs and.
You pay, and you would pay for them to go to school or get certified, I mean, I don't know why.
Yeah, or maybe we can get a training, we can, you know, encourage, especially if we can hire local young people. Where we have the import, employment contract and then serve, you know, thirteen years and then. You know, encourage to learn and got a certified.
Yeah, yeah. Building a workforce is certainly something I'm interested in doing. And I've I've coached some of our our new and young operators through a city-funded. I mean, the the education and training isn't actually expensive, it just takes time. So unfortunately, building a workforce is exactly what needs to do. And the right time to have done it was a couple of years ago, unfortunately. But we're we're standing them up as fast as we can.
Interesting, thank you.
Any more questions about water? Now let's move to cemetery, which is on page sixty-three.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so city Cemetery Enterprise Fund. Funds operations of the three municipal cemeteries, the mountain cemetery, the veterans cemetery, and the valley cemetery. These encompass over fifteen usable acres. Operations and maintenance responsibilities include burial and inurnment preparation and coordination. Cemetery improvements, tree hazard assessment and abatement, grounds maintenance, morgue maintenance, road maintenance, and vandalism abatement. Priorities, the cemetery's fund budget show expenses exceeding revenues. So the city's general fund may transfers to the cemetery fund to balance the budget. Some of the special accomplishments of the last fiscal year. Where that we managed to continue to provide compassionate and respectful customer service to residents during stressful and emotional times. We trimmed substantial overgrowth of vegetation and improved sightlines throughout mountain cemetery. And we completed construction of Peace Triangle number two, which created forty-nine new in-ground cremains burial plots in the mountain cemetery annex. Our goals for the next fiscal year include working with the city council ad hoc committee on cemetery strategy, strategy and options for the future. Continuing to provide compassionate and respectful customer service. Creating more cremain niches for sale in the valley and veterans cemeteries. Conducting a tree hazard assessment in all of the cemeteries. Reviewing the city cemetery services fee information. And continuing to responsibly maintain, maintain the cemeteries in a physically responsible manner. Some of the increases in the costs for next fiscal year. Included costs related to temporary staff in the cemetery department. To provide continuing coverage during times of extended injury or illness from a full-time staff. And then increases in contract service costs for engravers that actually carve carve the the names and dates into.
So, and that should be offset by revenue, so, right? Because that's a pass-through.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So it's it's an increase in the the budget expense, but it's 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 a pass-through, so.
So cemetery fund is an enterprise fund. And if you look at the bottom, I mean, this is completely bankrupt, right? I mean, we talked about like our reserves and our extra funds and everything, but, and I don't, you know, again, I'm not a municipal finance professional. So it's like, you know, we have a healthy general fund, but this is too many dollars in the red, basically. And so it's basically all the same money, right? I mean.
It's actually not, it's a, it's a separate fund, but what happened is. It's actually not, it's a, it's a separate fund, but what happened is.
Well, no, I know, but it's city thing.
The cemetery fund borrowed um funds from the general fund, also from endowment fund and from another, the other fund to build the um uh which one was it, was one of the mausoleums?
The holding lot.
Yeah, and so, and it has remained in debt.
Yeah, no, I meant to say, I mean, obviously it's a different fund, but at some level, like, you know.
Right, right, it's a um, yeah, I mean, and so it
It's all fungible.
the major thing is this debt that's owed to the other fund. So, and there's no way to recoup um revenue and to to pay off that debt, so.
Right. So how long do we just run sort of a negative balance here without like
So.
writing or, and again, I.
Funding, yeah.
Yeah, so um.
But I think in reality, you know, looks like another when they generate and a couple of million dollars from this and then cemetery and service to the pay this, I wanna suggest maybe we can talk with the uh you know, auditor or the CPA, you know, got a consulting, how to we make an adjustment? You know, because this is reality, never not pay back to the general fund.
Right, so um.
We need to
Yeah.
do some.
Um so I ha- I have had conversations with the auditor about, you know, how we could
Mm-hmm.
Um one of the the ways is to not make it an enterprise fund, because it really hasn't been an enterprise fund from the start.
Well, it's sort of like a maxi mall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um one of the ways is to make it a department of the general fund
Mm-hmm.
and then the debt, you know, the the general fund would have to absorb.
Yes.
But we would also have the asset of the, so all the assets from the cemetery fund would be a part of the
Mm, mm-hmm.
But but this expense has to go back to the general fund then, so it it is, it would be a write-off. Um so, but we are doing a cemetery study, um you know, the one um I've had conversations with the con- um the consultant and, you know, their focus is really gonna be the mountain cemetery. They they feel that there's, you know, potential there just because of the historic nature. And the other thing is that we could um possibly, if we turned it into a park, um we could probably, you know, get some park funding for, um you know, in order to, you know, um help with um some of the the operational things. Um and and that is, and mountain cemetery would really be the one that we would focus on for that, so. Uh you know, so that's, but we could still make it a department of the city instead of, you know, just having it um titled an enterprise fund when it's really not, so. Um but there, so that's, I'm kind of excited about the cemetery study to see what they're, you know, because when you talked to me, you said we're really gonna be focusing on that um on on the mountain cemetery before, you know, I mean, they'll definitely look at the other ones, but because I think we can create some um niches in both of those areas um to possibly bring in more revenue too, but yeah, you're right, never paying it off, we're not, it's gonna be a long.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually think there's, um I'm actually excited about the cemetery study as well, because I think, actually think it's a lot of potential.
Yeah.
Um I mean, I don't think it has to be this way.
We just don't know how to run cemeteries, right?
Right, but maybe someone else does, or you know.
Right, right, there there may be, there's potential, I think, some potential there, so um uh yeah, and I, you know, um
Yeah.
They, you know, we have, I mean, we could be doing tours up there and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, it could be a historic park, we could get grants, we could open up a little space, we could, you know.
Right, yeah, right, grants, right, mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so um so after we get the cemetery study, and we've talked about it and some of the potential there, you know, then we can talk about how we're gonna um get rid of the debt, so.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to request that you all do public comment on this?
Oh, yeah.
Can you do that?
Mm-hmm, and the, yeah, because today we don't have a lot of, I, yeah, just a lot of, in Patricia's station.
It's up to you, yeah, I think it's fine, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fine, yeah, if you have any, before we
So. Yeah, so I agree with you, you know, the um
go quick.
Really great.
Uh actually, both of the valley cemetery and the mountain cemetery are both restored. And I'd like to see you do a historic resource evaluation and apply for national registry on that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um I think that you're right, um making it a park is will possibly bring some funds in, but also the Native Sons of the Golden West are very interested in historic preservation and they've talked about approaching the city as a group to help with the maintenance and stuff like that. So I think that having, you know, community outreach, the rural cemetery in Santa Rosa is a very active group of people, uh volunteers, that completely take care of the cemetery. They have tours, they raise money. Um I think that there are, and that's, a lot of that was, uh there were pioneers, but in Sonoma, we have a very special cemetery and um I think that we're putting this in the boat. And uh we, as a historical society, people contact us and ask how they wanna work up the cemetery. They wanna do something, you know, so I think that if the city could figure out how to um facilitate that, it would be a good idea.
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Great, yeah, it's a great idea, yeah, if if we needed to applying for any of the grants or the and the financial aid or, yeah, they will look at it out of the financial statement, you know, definitely that is not, you know, acceptable showing. You know, not at the, too many dollars.
That's a lot of money, Mr. Mayor.
That is the, that is a little bit of mistake and accumulated year by year.
Okay, our cemetery done?
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna go to the vehicle replacement, long-term building maintenance and these? Um the uh vehicle replacement fund, the long-term building maintenance fund and the um MIS funds are actually internal service funds, so um funds are transferred out from the general fund, all of the departments to um fund. We have a um a schedule that um that we we have listed all of our assets, all of the building assets, vehicle assets, and then um
What page, I'm sorry?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, seventy-nine, sorry.
Seventy-nine.
Thank you.
Um so, and what we do is we list all our assets and then we look um at the years, um how much will cost to replace those um assets in a number of years, so um for like all of our vehicles, for our um computer equipment, and then for building maintenance. And um we can go into detail on to the funds, but really it comes in, so it's funded by transfers from the general fund from the other departments as well. So um how much detail do you wanna go into those? They're all separate funds, so each each of the um vehicle replacement, building replacement and the MIS are separate funds.
Just a question on on the replacement of the vehicles, do we look at um making them electric vehicles when we can or no? I mean, people are gonna ask.
Yeah. Yeah, so our sustainability coordinator uh actually just sent me an email letting me know that we've cut a little, a little grant to do a a fleet conversion study.
There's one in, isn't there one in our parking lot?
There's, there's, there's a hybrid.
Right.
Uh the building department has a Prius that's used by the building inspector. Um and the only other EV that's in the fleet is the police department, the little gem uh that the parking enforcement officer drives around. Um fleet vehicles for public works, which are heavier duty, uh haven't really been supported by EV solutions um to date, but uh the new Ford F-one-fifty Lightning is apparently um a contender for some of our lightweight trucks, so we will be looking at that.
Have you looked at the price tag on that one?
I haven't.
They're like ninety grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at them, um and the waiting list is about two years.
Yeah, um so we've just been trying to replace some of our really old gasoline-powered fleet trucks and um prices on those have gone up considerably.
Yeah.
And the wait lists are also years long.
Yeah, well, they are, I mean, I I just had this conversation um with a family member who um you know, was looking for a a certain kind of vehicle and we went through like all the electrical vehicles that were capable of doing the kind of, you know, off-road and, you know, um pulling heavy machinery, whatever, and you're right, that it just is not a niche market right now for electrical vehicles except for, you know, the Lightning, which actually is gonna, you know, uh I think it's gonna be more of a suburban truck use more than a heavy, although you can get the heavy-duty package on it. But you get it completely tricked out, it's a hundred grand.
Yeah.
It's a really expensive vehicle, I mean, it's great vehicle, but it's very expensive. So I, I eventually all cities and whatever, we're gonna have this problem. Hopefully they, we start getting, I mean, there's no vehicles to buy now anyway because of the supply chain issue and the chip issue and all of that, but anyway, thank you for checking into it, I appreciate it.
And then um.
I have a question about the MIS fund.
Uh-huh.
Um so the revenue comes from charges for services, what does that mean?
Right, so every department, so all of the departments, um it's charged out to each department who has, you know, certain computers and then a percentage of that goes into the internal service fund so that we can replace the computers when they become obsolete. So it's, it's a way of.
So it's charged to a department?
Yeah, so so charged to the general fund.
So it's. So it's all general fund money?
What, part of it could is, could be um water, water, and um just because they also have computers that they're using.
Right.
It could be water.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So yeah, so it's just a, every year there's like an incremental cost that we're, that is put into the internal service fund so that by the time we replace those, um the equipment that we have funds available.
So over three years, we've, just the expense for this kind of, and I assume it's cybersecurity and all that, what's going up?
It's cybersecurity, that's all it was, yeah, yeah, so that, last year there was a huge cost increase
Significantly, yeah.
because of all the cybersecurity that came out of that
Yeah.
um study that we did and we need it, and actually our insurance is, is now, yeah, it's now requiring it, so um
That's what you said.
Uh but if you um weigh it against the cost of when somebody does a cyber attack on a city, it's way less, so.
Or the increase in insurance rates if we don't have it, right, yeah?
Right, yeah, but really, um there's so many small cities that have been hit by cyber um attacks and the the cost is incredible when that happens.
So half a million dollars a year out of our, yeah?
Yeah, so. Yeah, unfortunately, but that's the, that's the world.
Because every, every now and then you see editorials, like in Sonoma Sun, for example, or other places, they always say like, where is all the money going? And I don't think people realize that this kind of detail that, you know, cities have to.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, right, so that's, that's, those, yeah, that's a big, that was a huge beginning, it's gonna stay like that for a while, so. Because now it's the maintenance cost, I don't know about. Um the rest of the um funds, um I don't know if you wanna go into detail on each of the funds that we have left, the budgets, and we've got this swimming pool scholarship sign where we've had funds there for quite some time, just waiting until the the swimming pool is built. We're gonna be transferring out twenty-five thousand for scholarships this year, once they get the pool um ready to go. And that will probably be an ongoing process, just so that, you know, we can provide that um that uh support for people to learn how to swim.
And so as I shared, we're going to be passing over a one-point-five-million-dollar check
Right.
to the school district tomorrow, so I'm excited about that.
Right, right, and um so the next one.
Yeah, that's true. How much?
One-point-five million.
The city's not doing, no, no.
No, no.
We said that too, we go ahead and like, with our.
The Sonoma splashboard.
Yeah, I know, I had a little heart attack, like, where's that? Yeah, exactly, um.
So we, the the, the board appreciates, you know, your, the cooperation.
Yeah, that is.
Because there's so many important things that
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna be doing, they're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Right, and that will provide.
Local nonprofits, they are tremendous.
Yeah.
I I guess this is like a general question I have, for example, in twenty-fourteen, we put aside, was it two-hundred-and-fifty K for swimming scholarships? And so now that's eight years later, does it just sit somewhere?
It sits in a fund, we have it separated into a fund, so it's isolated, so nobody uses that, and then it earns interest.
Yeah, but is it like earning money, any money, okay, it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Or some investment.
Yeah, so each, each of the funds do earn interest based on the the um dollar value of the fund.
And are there like rules about the type of investments we can put?
Well, right now, um investments, you know.
But conceivably, you could have made a lot of money by now if, you know.
Right, um but the, I mean, the the best investment that we're doing right now, we've, we haven't talked about investments for the city, but we're
Yeah.
um all of our funds invested in life.
Mm-hmm.
Um we've talked to a a financial advisor who I would like to come in and and talk about an investment policy.
Mm-hmm.
He said the best you can do right now is life, um and so you really can't do any better. There may be at some point, we would take, you know, a portion of our um uh excess cash and, you know, invest it. Um but that would be, it would be on using our investment policy and we would, you know, we'll bring that forward to the finance committee and then
Right.
But right now, we're doing, you know, we're doing the best we can with life, so.
You know, of course, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, so, but um but absolutely every fund who has cash in it earns interest.
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay, um the next one is the housing trust fund, and um you'll see that we did, I mean, we've recorded um salary, do we put salaries? Yes, so part that, the thirty thousand salaries is in that fund, so we can, you know, if you wanna make a decision now on, we could just put that off, oh, I'm sorry, page eighty-six.
What, what page?
Eighty-six.
Um and if we could, you know, if you want, the council decides, let's put it all back in the general fund, we'll, we'll have that fixed for the next um, you know, not allocate anything to the debt, to the housing trust fund. For that, my new position.
So you're projecting at the end of the next fiscal year, we'll have over a million in the place, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm, that's good.
And that's due to T O T.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, the one percent T O T.
Mm-hmm.
Uh my, uh my question is, uh we spent some of the money during the pandemic for housing assistance program.
Right, so you'll see, um actually in nineteen-twenty, um a hundred thousand.
Nineteen, nineteen-twenty, yeah, one hu- yeah, one hundred, yes.
Yeah, and then um twenty-twenty-one, it was another fifty.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but I want to see if possible in the future, we went and paid back, we're blanishing, you know, to to this, if possible, because originally.
And we did discuss that in last budget, um we discussed that in the last budget, and we had it in the budget and then council decided to take it out, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
To reimburse that fund, so.
All right, yeah, because this is on a long-term project, but anyway, on a house-related, you know.
Right. But that's, you know, and, yeah, I was gonna say that that's exactly what this fund was for, it was for, you know, say, with rental assistance, so
Mm-hmm.
um that's what we use it for, and then we also have, um we reimburse for um ADUs. Yeah, we have a small, we had set aside some funds so that people building ADUs could be reimbursed for that cost, so. And but.
For the cost of the application and, or what cost?
For many fees.
Huh?
For many fees.
For many fees, right?
Okay.
Not for the cost of the AD.
Right, yeah, and it's just one of the things, I mean, I'm, you know, so there, but it, the program's out there, so.
Has it really been really nice?
And. In potential, obviously, we still have to discuss and finalize that residential component, but potential in lieu fees from development projects would go to this fund.
Hmm. Hmm, yeah.
So conceivably, um
Are you talking about the, yeah, yeah.
Real.
Like residential component and new fees.
Yeah, yes, that that would come in there too, so.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of potential, I think, there.
I think there's a lot of potential, I I'm glad you brought up revenue because we have a, you know, we're, we need to talk about the revenue side and um
That's great.
that any uh any ability we have to um increase revenue, I'm always looking for that and I know we're gonna have a further discussion of parklets and and um, you know, a fee structure perhaps uh for that. Um so, you know, that might go into some other project that we want to develop. Um there's also been talk of um um transfer um fees for property transfer fees and other ways that we can capture um vacancy uh fees on buildings that um are sitting vacant for extended periods of time with people failing to keep them up to date and putting letters on their buildings.
Slash businesses also?
And businesses, that's what I'm talking about, businesses.
Yes, yeah. This is.
Businesses, right.
Yeah, sitting, yeah, sitting over there doing nothing.
So, um I think that, you know, there's, I think, I'd love to have a a conversation at some part, maybe it's in August at the retreat or something
That is right.
about all of the different ways that we could increase revenue into this fund.
Yeah.
Um because we're not gonna be able to be a player in affordable housing. Um I mean, it's wonderful to see it double, um and it's great that prod, you know, that we're the planning commission and we're having that conversation about how to uh resolve that. Um but I think we can even be more creative and because it's such a need that we we should be talking about all different ways of um creating revenue for this fund.
Right, and that's why I'm sort of excited about this assistant to the city manager, because that would be manager that, something that they could concentrate on. Um you know, we've, we've made stabs at it and, you know, but if there's the capacity for the planning department is is limited, so um I, that's why, you know, I'm excited about that position. And if you'll make a decision about where you want it funded from, if you wanna take it out of here, that's, I mean, we could just do that and we can just take it out of here, put it back all in the general fund, and that's, you know, um the council wants to let us know now if they can.
And what are you talking specifically, you're talking?
Well, put all with the, the, instead of doing thirty percent to the housing trust fund for the um assistant to the city manager,
Yeah, all.
we can just put it all back in the general fund.
Well, this is a budget, at any point, you can move thirty thousand dollars, correct? I mean, so I don't see any reason um to move it at this point. I think that i- if it becomes necessary that a fund needs thirty thousand dollars, you, you know, you know where to find it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, it, to me, it's, it's, you know, it doesn't really matter, because it's a budget, it's not, you know, you can move it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But, I mean, I'll, whatever, you know, my colleagues decide, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, but.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The, the other way to think it is, might, you might think of it as, well, if we put it all back in the general fund, and then we find out that, uh, you know, housing, that she's able, or he.
It's movable.
Makes sense, yeah.
He or she is able to, um, you know, bring in grants, or, you know, does bring in revenue, then maybe, you know, at a later time, we could reallocate it to the housing trust fund, just based on the, the revenue, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, up to you, there's.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, that makes sense, because right now, not necessary, you know, using the housing the fund to pay that specific, an employee.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my reticence about it was, um, I mean, obviously, thirty thousand, and then, then you have, so it ends up being like forty.
Thirty.
Right, because of the, the allocation of other benefits.
The benefits, yes, but, um. You know, the revenue is obviously, as Councilwoman Lowe mentioned, very important, like looking for ways to boost revenue to this fund, but I'm also thinking about what we could do with it. And again, a lot of this is beyond my expertise in terms of municipal finance, but, you know, if I know if you have a revenue stream of like six to eight-hundred thousand dollars a year from the T O T, is there a way to like finance? Like do bond issues, like, you know, again, I don't know, but, um, meaning we could do more with. You know, than just a million, or two million, or three million, so like the goal would be, in my view, to build up this fund as large as possible.
Right, so, and I think that, yeah, the.
Thinking that you could do more with it, and so.
Major, the major thing that I would be looking at is like C D B G grants, there's, there's quite a bit out there now, and, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Are we large enough?
Well, I, you know, I don't know, but I just got, I mean, I just got from our, you know, our, um, we get our lobbyist sends his stuff all the time, I'm like, oh, could we?
Because it's.
And I don't, you know, we don't really have anybody to concentrate on that.
Yeah, having come from the largest city in a county, and now to one of the smallest, we really lose because transportation hubs, right? You get incentive as a city, what do we have, a transportation hub of two people at a bus stop?
Mm-hmm.
That's not right, you know, that's not fair, and so I think that we need to be able to, I don't know even know why I'm saying this, but it's, it's unfair.
Yeah, I was just always thinking, like, if we needed, let's say we wanted to do a fifteen-million-dollar project, but we obviously don't have that. But if we have six-hundred thousand dollars coming in every year, you could like potentially finance it.
It, I, you know, I don't, I don't really know, that, that's a, yeah, so that's something that, yeah, um, uh, like, all of this is, I was just, you know, questions that have come in recently, I'm like.
I mean, I don't. Yeah, exactly, yeah, so. Yeah, no, I know, I, yeah.
Well, I need a housing expert, because, you know, and I think that any city, you know, manager would think that has to.
That's right. I think we need an assistant to the city manager.
Assistant to the city manager, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I think it's great, you know, I think, there's one benefit for, for using this fund for that position, and that person knows, you know, it's kind of like, all right.
I was so excited.
You know, get us at least thirty grand this year.
Yeah, pay for yourself, yeah, yeah.
You pay for yourself, I mean, I've worked on projects, um, where literally I come up with brilliant ideas and, and my bosses said, that's great, let's do it, find the money.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, I, I either do or I don't, but, um, so there is a little bit of, I think, intrinsic, um, motivation when you know that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it doesn't really bother me either way, that was just, I was trying to explain, but I was, they're talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't bother.
No, it's a good conversation, yeah, and I think that.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm thinking, because here, we symbolize to say, this is a housing fund, but originally, this is an account set up. And the full name is Affordable Housing Fund, we should honor our original.
No, it was called the Housing Trust Fund, and we actually have, like, I looked at, because I wanted to see what it could be used for, um, Housing Trust Fund, and there's a whole definition on everything what's, and that's.
Mm-hmm. But.
At, as, as it's set up, it's called the Housing Trust Fund, so.
But that is one percent at the beginning, why we're gonna put this money to the, this fund, but that's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Sonoma City Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Well.
That is, is not for, for some other purpose, yeah, that is a specific, you know, purpose.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Yeah. Yeah, because, you know, uh, when we use this, the money should be directed related, uh, within, in the future, we build up affordable housing. Helping the people to get an affordable housing justified.
Well, I think when it was established, they put together a resolution of what you could do with it.
Mm.
Yes, that's exactly right, yeah.
Yeah.
And so you could develop affordable housing, you could potentially buy an apartment building, indeed restricted, you could provide, um, you know, when we're talking about what we could do with it, rental assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Right, there's quite a few things you could do, yeah.
Yeah.
Rental assistance.
We could even provide, we have states doing this now, down payment assistance, um, there's a lot of different things conceivably we could do, so.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Right, right. Right, and other cities have other programs, like we looked at the, the town of Truckee, they have quite a few programs, um, so, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that, it's exciting what we could do with, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it's just, where you, like, cost allocation, when you use cost allocation, it's, you're trying to match people's, um, costs to what, what they're working on, so that's part of the cost allocation, so.
Right. Mm-hmm. My understanding of this affordable housing, for example, we, and accumulated, and the two million dollars, and then there was a land in the, in the city. And then we can buy this in the land, and then afford the developer, and build up with affordable housing, that is my, always in my, I'm, maybe it's wrong, yeah.
Well, prior, I, you know, but with redevelopment agency, those things were, that was happening, before the dissolution of redevelopment, that was happening.
How about? Yeah, the bottom, I, I would.
I would only want to put twenty percent down and finance it.
Right, right, and that's, I mean, if, I, I would be happy to send you like the housing trust fund, what it was done by resolution and what, what it could be used, it's used for all those things.
Look around the city.
I mean, that's a possibility down the road, if you, that's something you wanna manage, so, there's all those, those.
Well, that's why I, I don't know if we wanna raid, uh, that trust fund, when we've got enough in gen- in the general fund to, to support this, the salary.
Right, so, can we take a vote?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, Aubrey, making a motion to that?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, pay for the assistant to the city manager out of the general fund.
Second.
Role call piece.
Councilmember Felder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Nardine?
Yes.
Councilmember Evermonte?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, that, that's.
But that can always change in the future, yeah, in the future, while we figure out what, how we wanna do with it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but.
Along with beachy houses.
But let's just hold it there, I would, got a chance.
Who knows about these beachy houses.
I'll show you, they're all close.
Okay, um, and then, um, the following fund is, is, it's called the Intergovernmental Transfer Fund. And it has to do with funding that comes from Medi-Cal and, um, payments for ambulance transports, we get, we pay the government to get us back.
What page, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm page eighty-seven, it's, it's such a, it's the most confusing thing, but we pay the government to get us some of our Medi-Cal funding back.
Eighty-eight, eighty-seven. Mm, the government.
So, we pay them, but we get more back in Medi-Cal, so when they, they take the, um, when we get, somebody takes on ambulance ride, they have Medi-Cal, um, and, so they don't have to pay the full amount. And then, but they get us back some of that.
It doesn't come to us, the city, or it goes to the district?
It comes to the city, it, it comes to the city, because we, we have, we get the ambulance revenue, so we get all of this revenue, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it actually has built up, you know, um, uh, a substantial, um, fund balance, we, we are using some funding this year to pay, pay off the final year of the, um. Safer Grant people, because this year it went way up, four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, this is the last year of that grant, so, and they, they've talked about possibly getting, um, additional funding for that, so. That'll be done.
Because the reality of a fire department is they don't go to fires, now it's medical calls, very low percentage of, you know, fires, and which, thank goodness, I guess, because of.
Right.
Codes and things like that could have done that, but so this is to our benefit.
Right, so we get all that revenue, so that's it, that's, that's, is that the last one? And we have a, so, anyway, but so does all the other funds, um, so, I think what we will, what I'd like to do is, um. Send you the spreadsheet that, um, Lisa, um, Lisa did about, that got the market rate, what we would, what we would charge instead of the dollar, you know, what it would cost these, um. Um, nonprofits to, to rent from us, and so that is an additional benefit that we're providing, not just funding, but we're also providing that benefit, so. And that will give you an idea, and I didn't know, and what I'd like to do is just send that spreadsheet out to you each separately, and then you can ask me, um, just per, you know, me.
Individually.
Yeah, yeah, questions, and we can get those answered, and, um.
I guess I don't understand, uh, they rent what?
So, say, so, like, um, vintage house, they, 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 yeah, they pay a dollar, um, and, but if we rented that to them at market rate, it would be quite a bit higher.
Vintage house.
Oh, God, okay, now I get it.
So, we're, so we're not only providing funding to them, we're, we're also providing, uh, a, a low rent, like a dollar rent.
Right.
Yes. It's a larger building than City Marcy House, I mean, if we're trying to be equitable with our nonprofits, that.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Well, yeah, they're, they're paying a dollar for the land, that they not, uh.
Well, the land, and that's the hard thing, trying to find land, and how much land is worth, how much you could rent land to people, that's a difficult one.
Yeah, yeah. They own a building, yeah.
It's twenty and twenty-five dollars for twenty-five years.
Vintage, vintage house owns the building.
Yeah, that's right, so, so that one's a little bit difficult, that one's sort of not, probably not the best, but we're trying to figure out what the land is, I mean, that may not be possible.
That.
So it's a land. Land is. Ground is.
But some of the other ones that we provide, um, the, you know, free, it's really free rent is what it is.
Yeah.
We own our own building.
Or, all right, you know, right now is the five-thirty-three, yeah, I think the, we.
Yeah, so I think we're, really, that's, that we're, yeah, we do.
We did.
Yeah, send us an email, see what is the next good day for us.
Okay, well, well, actually, I think we'll just, we'll just take it to the June first, and so what we'll do is, if you can, if you have questions, and I can answer them before that date.
June first. Yeah.
June first? June.
Um, and then what we'll do is we'll bring it to, um, city council on the first, the budget to be adopted.
Okay.
And, um, if, if you have too many questions, and it, and we need to come back, we'll come back on the fifteenth, but we will bring it for adoption on the first with, um. And if you have changes, but if, like, at that meeting, you say, oh, no, I, we don't want this.
And there could be a lot of discussion, June first, and then we could always adopt it on the fifteenth, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes. We could adopt it on the fifteenth, yeah, okay?
Well, that sounds perfect, yeah.
All right. All right, thank you, thank you everyone.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike, Chris, Oriana, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Your most.
They've had a great time.
Thank you.